I guess from now on it would be a good thing if I actually ready to get done.
Why is that?
Because I've been forgotten that we're doing a study session with the Congress.
And that's what it's.
I know. I'm going to say, um, I'm going to go ahead and do it.
No, I just want to be that big because it was.
Oh, thanks.
There's a lot harder to pull that in, but not hard to pull it up.
Um, it's not that hard for you to see the labyrinth. Because when we do, uh, or Melissa, maybe one of them get down.
Right.
May I have any mic? Because I want to make sure that we don't have the TV in the way.
That's all right. They're still trying to set up. Just keep going and ignore them.
Okay, so it was a little bit of hectic, but we already knew ahead of time that we had the extensions, but it's nice that they confirmed with all the cities because a lot of the cities are behind. Some of them are just beginning to file. This COVID-19 caused a lot of problems for so many cities, companies, entities, homes residential. So it was a little bit hectic, but we were able to finalize by August the 31st. So, um, I guess if Ivan doesn't call in about one minute, I'll go ahead and start. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Well, uh, we are sort of mayor and associates.
You're in.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
Heard I was going to talk in here. No, I'm talking.
All right. Good afternoon. Nice meeting you. Nice seeing you again. I guess it's more over the last three years, we've been making this presentation after completion of the audit. And I'm, you're already in the Carmen and Elaine, they were the, these, the auditors that work on the, on the audit. So they're, they're going to tell over what we did and what they found and what's going on. And I, I'll just give you a brief introduction about our firm. I'm the managing partner. I am the engagement partner on this audit. And, um, we, we conduct several governmental audits throughout the state. And currently we're also filing for what we call GSA schedule to view federal contractor, the contract for audit for the federal government. So, I mean, we still haven't got any, any answers yet, but we have a consultant that's working with us and getting this, completed. And hopefully that very soon we'll, we'll do it. And the, the, we can, fortunately for us, as opposed to, I get a lot of calls from, from various sources. I have, as you all, most of you know, I have a, a lot of relationships with the AICPA, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the, I'm a committee member of the National Federation of Accountants. So I get a lot of calls from them and a lot of CPA firms, including the big four, the large accounting firms that have difficulty retaining staff because they lost a lot of clients. This COVID-19 has done a tremendous harm to the, to the economy and many businesses are closing and reducing our, so it's, it's become very, very problematic all around. Fortunately for us, we've been growing. I don't know why it has to do with, but we're growing. We keep adding more clients and we're looking into adding additional staff because, you know, the, 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 the business is there. Actually, Elaine has been working very closely with, with me and Carmen. Because we were approached by the, in LA, there's going to be, LA Metro is going to build a high-speed rail train that goes along the, from the, from the San Fernando Valley to the LAX. Basically, because I don't know if you, any of you have been in LA, or if you have any, you know that the 405 freeway is a disaster. It's the worst freeway in the world, I understand. So to, to, to reduce that traffic, the, the, Los Angeles has decided to build this air metro that goes from the San Fernando Valley all the way to LAX. And, um, one of the firms, finalists firms that I had, that has been, uh, you know, on, and, and they believe that they're going to be awarded the, the, the contract. They've been basically taken as, as their accountants to help them on taxation, accounting and so on. Because obviously if they get involved, there'll be a lot of international taxation issues that will have to assist them. And as well as accounting issues and finance issues. So as you can see, we, we, the only reason I'm explaining this because I want you to know that we are, we're growing. So we, I mean, we're doing better than most other accounting firms as far as I know. And that's thanks to, to, to many reasons, you know, that, one of the reasons because we try to, to do as much as we can quality work and we're very proactive to clients. And, um, so I guess that's been very much appreciated in the industry and that's well known in the industry. And we're, at this point, we've been rewarded while other firms are getting flabbergasted because the, this coronavirus, COVID-19 has become a disaster for everybody all around. Maybe, I don't know, even the, the statistics that show now that in San Francisco, 50% of these small businesses are closing. Because, you know, obviously the California has some very tough, um, measures when it comes to closure and not doing business and so on. So, but that's them putting a lot of businesses out, it's taking a lot of small businesses out of the, out of, out of the picture. And that's affected a lot of accounting firms, smaller and large. I got, like I said, I was talking with, I was seeing a senior person from the AICPA today. And they told me that Deloitte is letting go on a lot of CPAs as well as, um, I understand that Ernst &amp; Young, KPMG, all of them have had those issues. And also the second-tier firms are dealing with the same situation like BDO and, and Grant Thornton and so on. So in any event, we're doing very well and thanks, you know, for, for the, for, for, for the clients like you that appreciate the, the work that we do. And like I said, we are here to, to provide the best service we can and work with you to get the, I mean, we, we try to be proactive, not reactive in providing, you know, the, the work basically. Because our, we feel that our job is to, to help you manage your finances the best possible way. And the audit is just the result of that. The, hopefully when we conduct the audit, the numbers are final and, and we, we can basically help you put those numbers. And but all the financial aspects of the, of the, of the, of the entity has been already dealt with. And hopefully we are part of that and helping you assess what you need, financial needs are and so on. So that, um, you can best posture yourself for the growth of the future. I don't know about Avonale, but I understand, you know, there's going to be some, some, you're, you're very, an area that's very much into agriculture. And I don't know how is that going to be affected on going forward basis. So I'm sure you, you guys know better than I do in that respect. But we estimate that there'll be a lot of changes coming through. Like I said, today I was talking with individuals from IFAC, the International Federation of Accountants, as well as the AICPA. And everybody's expecting a lot of changes. Yeah. And we, we, we estimate there'll be a lot of changes too going forward. And hopefully there'll be good changes for, for everybody. But you never know until they, 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 they take place. So that's all I'm going to, anybody has any questions for me? I'm very more than happy to, to discuss whatever item you, you have on your mind.
No, I think we're good to go.
Okay. So I'm going to let Carmen and Eileen go over the financial information. And, um, and basically the, the audit process and what we, what we found and what the issues were and so on. Okay. So I'll be here through the end and if you have any questions for me by then, you know, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Go ahead Carmen and Eileen.
Hi, again, this is Carmen Soto-Mayer. We discussed, read it up about the extensions that the state controller gave us for 2019 or for 2020. And I'm going to introduce you the person that is going to discuss about this financial audit that we just finished. Just wanted to let you know that we did talk with Dawn. And there is no reason for us, as the way we are set up and with all the information we have, that this upcoming year, the audit can be done right on time and with any luck, with all the luck that we can get from, but between Dawn and us, we project that we should be able to give you a draft at the end of December or beginning of January. The unusual circumstances that happened in 2020, unfortunately, it caused us to close the office and to work from our homes for a while. Even now, we are still under that decree by the city of Pasadena, but we are completely set up to work wherever we want. It just took us a little while to get there. So with all that, I'm going to introduce you to Elaine. And she's going to explain a little bit about the financial statements that we just issued.
Hi, this is Elaine from Soto-Mayer Associates. So I'm going to go over some major point in the financial audit of City of Avonale for the year end through 30, 2019. So the first point is the single audit. Because in fiscal year, uh, 2017 to 18, the city's expenditure of federal award program is now exists of $750,000. So we did not perform the single audit for the year end of June 30, 2018. And in this year's financial statement audit, which is for the year end of June 30, 2019, the state's expenditure of federal award program is 3.6 million. And we performed the single audit in this year to cast the city's expenditure of federal award program. And then record on the schedule of, of expenditure of federal award program as being issued and contained in the financial statement. Um, and we don't have any findings on the CFA, which is the schedule of expenditure of federal award program. And for the upcoming financial statement audit for the year end through 30, 2020, based on our understanding of, about the cities, we estimate that the expense will exist the threshold of $750,000. So we are estimated to expect a single audit for next year audit. And, but we can only have the conclusion once we receive the financial, financial information for the year of, by the year end of June 30 to 2020. So that is the part for the single audit. And then another point I would like to go over is the finding. As I mentioned before, for the CFA, we don't have any findings. And also for the internal control, we issue an internal control, we issue an opinion on internal control without any exception. We don't have any findings on the city's, of city's internal control. The only finding we have in this, for the year end of June 30, 2019, is, is the bank reconciliation on the filing of state, uh, financial statements. So during our audit pro, process, we noticed the city continue leaving the bank reconciliation and reconcile. So the total cash balance on the operating bank accounts reconcile, did not reconcile to the cash balance record on the general ledger. Um, we have already discussed this kind of issue with the management. And then the management agree with the findings. And we also received the correction, corrective action plan, which, uh, which is agreed by the management and saying they're working on other software companies for code. And they're looking for a better accounting software for them to use. So those two are the major point on the, on the financial audit by the year end of June 30, 2019.
So other than that, we didn't find any issues and everything went smoothly except for COVID-19, obviously. So with all of this, we present you the audit and financial statement that we sent yesterday in hard copy for everybody to have one. So at this point, if anybody has any questions or comments to, to, for us, please, we're available right now.
Does anyone have any questions? It appears there's no questions. We thank you for all your hard work. It's nice to get it completed.
Yes, I agree with you.
Audits are always the best when they're completed.
Exactly.
We're already in the process of the next one.
Melissa, we need to schedule, I mean, depending upon how things are for you, as, as far as you're concerned there, as well as, Dawn and so on, so we can proceed with the next year audit. So we need to schedule a time when it's best feasible to come your place and we can initiate the process. So you let us know.
Most definitely. I will let you know.
Okay. I know with this COVID-19, it becomes very difficult for everybody. But, you know, we, we are trying to do as much as we can off-site, online. But there's certain things that, that needs to be addressed in person. And, and those, those things were, you know, we need to be there, talk with you and with Dawn and view documents. But obviously, you know, I know that you, you have a lot of, um, situations and restrictions because of COVID-19. So let us know what, what best fits your schedule and your, and your requirements.
Thank goodness for technology.
Yes. I mean, thank God, you know, a lot of the audits we're conducting online and going through meetings like this. And, you know, and, and it's been to some degree very, very good. But, I mean, I have a lot of clients all over the world and they keep asking me, when are you coming here? I said, you know, because there's nothing like eye-to-eye contact. And I said, there's nothing I can do. I have, first I have to, you know, they have to allow the lifted restrictions to travel abroad. And I don't know when that's going to happen. And two is that, you know, I don't know what's going on in your country. So because it's a, is a, you know, on a touch and go basis. So, but you know, the, the, the personal contact is, is very critical, especially on, on this business. And because, you know, a lot, a lot of, of what we assert as far as what's going on, we, we, we were asserted by discussing with you and with Dawn and, and looking at each other's eye-to-eye and having a conversation. So that's very critical. And, but obviously, you know, there's all kinds of restrictions for, that you are facing as well as us. So you let us know what best work and we can coordinate that.
Okay. Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we thank you for the good report.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
I would like to personally thank Dawn for her hard work. Audits aren't easy for those of you that have been through them. And we're, we're lucky to have her. She's actually a CPA and appreciate. You can see when she's in the middle of an audit, you can just see, you know, close the door, leave me alone. But no, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you for all your support. I greatly appreciate it.
So we have, I guess we have about 15 minutes.
I am going to move 7B up after the consent camera gets special presentation so we can recognize me as a separate.
Okay, it's 5:15 and I am going to call this regular meeting of the Avonale City Council to order. Angie, would you call the role? No, call the pledge allegiance next. Will everyone please stand with me and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the public people which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Angie, will you call the role?
Councilman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilman Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Preciado.
Here.
Mayor Woolley.
Here. Would you read the statement?
Committee, Government Code Section 54952.3, the members of the city council successor agency are entitled to receive a total of 300 per month because of being elected to the city council. They receive no other compensation for sitting as a member of the successor agency.
Okay. I would like, um, for us to move item 7B up to, right after item five.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, yes, please.
So I make a motion to move item 7B up to, if I before concern calendar.
Thank you.
I will second.
Angie, would you call the role, please?
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Preciado.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Aye.
I, I also would like to make a request. I would like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda. I spoke with the city manager and I'm requesting to have a report by Chief Stivers. And I would like to take that item to be right before we go into closed session. I believe we have Ed Hill online and also Richard Vias. So I would like to take the opportunity to, before we lose him, you know, soon sometimes it's kind of, you know, hard to stay on top of the meeting. So I will make a motion if we have a second.
To add, we need to know what we're adding.
Ready for closed session.
Yes, but what is?
Is it regarding the mobile testing station? Okay.
Okay.
I would like to state for the record that this item came up after the agenda was posted. We are deeming it an urgent matter and therefore asking that, our member Pro Tim is asking that be added to the agenda. But it is considered an urgent matter. Thank you.
The mobile station?
On the mobile testing.
Mobile testing.
Testing report.
So, uh, this is Mike Schulte. I'm just weighing in real quick. And so the, Melissa, the standard is right. For anything to be added to the agenda, it had to have come up after the posting. And two, it, it is essentially something that can't wait for the next council meeting. And so you've made the determination that both of those things are, are there for this, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All righty. So we have a motion on the floor to add that right before closed session.
Couple second.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Preciado.
Aye.
Mayor Woolley.
Aye.
All right. So the next thing on the agenda is the mobile testing report. And who's doing this report?
The Chief Stivers.
Chief Stivers, are you on line? There you are. I see you.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. Um, well, thank you for having me here tonight, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just want to give you some background. So yesterday on September 9th, 2020, the Public Health Director, Ed Hill, and I spoke about the, you know, Mr. Hill securing the National Guard Mobile Testing Center free of charge for the, for the Kings County community. So that this testing site would be sponsored by the National Guard and, um, fully, fully supplied, fully outfitted by the National Guard. So, um, this, this site would test everybody from the age of two years and older, and they do not require symptoms. So speaking with Mr. Hill further and prior discussions, a prior board of supervisor meetings and prior EOC meetings, which we participate at least every Monday on for the last six months or so, became apparent that testing of the farm workers, which makes up a, a segment of our population, is very, it's not accessible during the normal course of the work week. I think that was evident on a Thursday about six or seven weeks ago, when no one showed up to the Avonale clinic on a Thursday between nine and three, or whatever the hours were, when we had zero people test. So identified a gap Sundays was the day. That's the day, the common day that the farm workers are off work that day. And so Mr. Hill and I spoke about having them stationed in Avonale at Rice's Park. That was my idea on the 20th of September and the 27th of September. We chose, or I chose Rice's Park because it would provide adequate parking for the staff of the National Guard. Social distancing could occur for people waiting in line. And then I also spoke with Public Work Supervisor Scott Davis. And he agreed that there, all the restrooms should be open to provide some services for the people that might be waiting in line. I don't see a downside to this. It seems to be a hot topic apparently. I don't see a downside to this. It seems to be a hot topic apparently. But I know there is some concern because the National Guard will be dressed in their fatigues. But in reality, it's, I think it's how we, how we as leaders in our community present the message to our people that need the testing, have asked for the testing. And so today I also received a call from Pat Sanchez, who is the new superintendent. He was going to be on the call later, but I don't think he's on the call now, but he agreed to have his, some of his staff members present during the testing to basically assure the community that this isn't some scam of, and to get more residents to come to get tested. And so people recognize, residents recognize people from the school district, and that was his angle on that. He would also be willing to advertise it for us with their new app system they have. And I just think that leadership is the key to getting this pushed out. And Ed will go into more details about how after the 27th, how this mobile testing site will be used, and he could probably answer any questions on any specifics questions and maybe he can go into some, the metrics that this county needs to move up to the next level, the next tier that the governor pushed out a couple of weeks ago, but that's where we're at today. I would recommend that we move forward with this and that's where I'm at right now. Does the council have any questions for me before I turn it over to Mr. Hill?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So you guys had a meeting on Tuesday and I believe in the morning, and it was announced. My question is why council was not informed Tuesday or Wednesday? And I verified out yesterday, and that's why I'm requesting this meeting, this item to be added to the agenda, but because I really feel that this is very important to our community when we talk about the National Guard, farm working community, and I would like to be prepared and when they, I already talked to community members and I would like to share later on their concerns and their opinion. But I really would like to be notified on time before we move forward with anything that even the council is not aware, our community is not aware, is really a big concern on my side. Thank you.
Okay, well, if I can respond to that, I let City Hall know as soon as I found out about it, and I think that message was passed on to you folks. And the Tuesday's phone call, I think we talked about, I remember the National Guard topic coming up, but the date of Avenel date, I don't think was discussed. If it was, then I didn't pick up on that. It was a pretty lengthy call, but I pushed it out as soon as I knowingly found out about it, so I hope that alleviates some of your concerns.
If I may, I just found out on Wednesday, and at that time, I believe the dates had been discussed, Rusty, but the information was not public yet, pending a further conversation, I believe that Ed Hill needed to have with the National Guard, so that's, that's all I can say about that. Just wanted to make counsel where.
Does anyone else have questions for him?
And this is happening, this could be happening, I guess, apparently with your guys' approval, on the 20th, so it wasn't like it's happening this Sunday as well, so I would like to make sure everybody understands that, so. Anyway, if nobody else has any questions, I can turn it over to Mr. Hill.
Okay.
Ed, are you on the line?
Ed Hill, I saw you up there. He's muted.
I can text him real quick.
I just saw him go by. He's wearing a red shirt. There he is. He's muted.
How about now?
There he is.
I can hear you now.
I apologize. I am still struggling with technology. You think I'd be able to understand it by now. Thank you, Chief Stivers, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm going to go ahead and provide some additional details. Hopefully I won't get too granular. This is a long saga and a long story that I'm going to try and convince. So as Chief Stivers mentioned, a while back, we did a countywide survey on where our testing gaps were. And so we solicited responses from anybody in the county who would be willing to share. And one of the things that we identified during that process was that individuals, you know, wanted to be tested on Saturdays and Sundays, which makes sense, since the majority of the working world works Monday through Friday. And then, you know, we know that the farming industry and agriculture even work six and sometimes even seven days a week. So we needed to add options. In order to do that, we did change the hours and the days of operations of our OptumServe test site, which is at our day reporting center in Hanford to Tuesdays through Saturdays. But that's a stationary site, which didn't really meet the needs of the community. We also had a mobile testing site from a vendor called Verily. They were also stationed in Hanford. They were not very willing to depart from any of their practices, and they had barriers in the way that made it difficult for people to test, even so much so that when we finally said that, you know, they didn't need to hang out anymore, the last two days that they were here, they were only also operating on Thursdays and Fridays. In those last two days, they only tested four individuals. I'm not going to get into all the barriers that they had with their service, because those are the exact barriers that we are trying to overcome. So back in July, when we had finally gotten access to CAREZAC money, I asked the board to set aside a million dollars for me to expand testing throughout the county. And I do want to be clear that there is, you know, prevalent in a lot of testing available throughout the county. There's in fact 32 testing sites throughout the county, and three of them are in Avenel. But again, they operate Monday through Friday, eight to five. And it's not always free as well. The day reporting center test site in Hanford is free. They do collect insurance information, but they never bill a patient. So anyways, so we use that, or we took that money and we started an RFP process to see if we could get some mobile testing sites in the outlying areas, specifically in the essential workforce, because we were seeing a lot of cases, specifically in the food packing industry, agriculture and livestock, public health and health and public safety. So we wanted to concentrate our efforts on those areas. During the RFP process, in fact, the day before, we were going to report to the board on who was ranked and our decision, I had a call from California Offices of Emergency Services notifying me of a free federal testing resource being sponsored by the National Guard. The mobile testing source will be very flexible. They only ask that we give them one day off. We're allowed to move them throughout the county as we see fit. They're also flexible in their hours. And so we had to, you know, in the schedule that we created the other day, and I'm going to get into more details on that, we gave them Fridays off because we wanted to make sure they're available Saturday and Sunday. This test site uses a PCR molecular test. This is a nasal swab, which is the gold standard in testing. As Chief Stivers mentioned, they test anybody from the age of two years and up. It's done through a self-swab process where medical staff oversee the individuals taking or conducting the swab and instruct them. The individuals, when they register, they ask them for an email address, but if they don't want to give up an email address, they just give them a username and password to get their own results, so that they don't have to provide that information. They do try and collect basic information such as a name and a phone number, because if you can imagine, we have to have a way to notify people that they are positive. And then we also have to have a method to do a case investigation, meaning to find out, you know, who else has been exposed, so we can make sure we get those individuals tested as well. The test turnaround time is about three to five days, which is normal for that process. And as Chief Stivers mentioned, the resources capable of testing 300 to 500 individuals a day. Now currently, as the chief mentioned, the unit is going to be deployed. It's going to be in Kings County on the 14th. And the administrative staff, this is the staff that drive the unit, set it up, set up the tents, tear it down and register patients, are National Guards, women and men, and they are in uniform. The medical staff is not in uniform because they are medical staff. And the unit is not a military unit. It's a regular travel trailer that you would see on the road any day, and then the awnings are just the regular awnings. That staff is going to be with us to get us up and running for two weeks. And once that two weeks is done, they're going to train us during that two weeks. And then public health staff will be taking over the administrative side. So again, the driving of it, the setting it up, the registering of patients, things along those lines. And so there will be no uniform personnel after that day on this unit. And we'll be able to extend this unit to the end of December is the way I understand it right now. So it's a very valuable resource that the county needs greatly. To get back to the idea of the need in the community and that million dollars, the price tag for mobile testing right now is anywhere between $132 to $180 per test. So that million dollars will only buy us up to maybe 5,500 tests. And then if public health, because we've also thrown around the option, since public health has a mobile unit, of us going back to testing again, we can get that price point down to $100 per test, which would only give us 10,000 tests. Since we anticipate the pandemic to go well beyond December and probably further into March, and now that we've learned the new news about the vaccine being delayed, maybe even longer, the county desperately needs this resource to be here. Now on the timeline, unfortunately, this is the status quo for this state. Anybody that sits on the Emergency Operations Center calls with me has heard me talk about this in the past. When the state notified us that we could get the OptumServe testing site, the one that's stationary at the data reporting center, we were given two days' notice. And this service was the same way. We were giving very little notice with the task of, we have to find places for them to test. We have to show that we can keep them busy, even to get them moving to our county. And so I reached out to my Emergency Operations Center contacts, and the chief is one of those, to ask if they can help us arrange for testing sites. And of course, I want the resource out in Avenel, and I want the resources out in all the areas of the county, specifically the remote areas. Again, it's a mobile resource, and that's why we want to do it. So, but I also understand the concerns about the uniformed individuals, which is why I'm going to once again reinforce that they are only going to be here for two weeks. And their role is not to track anybody or do anything along those lines. Their role is to test as many people as we can. Because if you've listened to the governor and if you've listened to the California Department of Public Health, the only way that they're going to release restrictions and to be blunt, the only way we are going to be able to move through the tiers and open up our county is through increased testing and through increased case management and contact tracing. It's, we have to find a way to drive down the positivity number. In addition to that, the governor just announced last Tuesday that they are going to switch the, they're going to add to the data monitoring slash tiered color coding system. As you may all know, Kings County is in the worst off tier where we're identified as the most widespread disease. And we can't move to the next tier until we get our new daily case average beneath or equal to seven new cases a day, or a testing positivity rate of 8% or below. Last Tuesday, the governor and the California Department of Public Health announced that they are adding, and they did add, a new testing requirement, that if you do not test the state average, they're actually going to increase your newly day test score, and we've already been victims of this circumstance. If you go to the California Department's website right now and you look at Kings County, our actual calculated daily test score, or not test score, our daily new case score is 10.7. But because we are not testing the state minimum average, they've increased our score to 11.3. So again, if we do not hit that metric, we are going to continue to be dinged, and it's going to make it more difficult for us to move through those tiers. One thing else that I'd like to share about that process is with them switching to an average, it's going to cause the rest of the state to test more, which is going to drive that average number up. So we have to have testing resources in the county, and it has to be sustainable testing resources. The $1 billion that we have accounted for this process, as I mentioned before, isn't going to last very long. And outside of that, the county is going to be in dire straits. And this is a resource that we will be able to test up to 500 people a day through to December, if everything goes the way it's supposed to go. Again, I know that there's challenges. I know that there's stigma associated with the the men and women in uniform. I'm going to reinforce that they are only going to be here for two weeks. And then it will all be people in scrubs conducting the testing. I'm going to go ahead and pause there. I know I provided a lot of information in a very short amount of time and see if there's any questions.
I have one. So if you're going to be in Avenel on November 20th, say, are you expecting 500 people to show up?
Of course, that would be amazing, but right out of the gate, we are not expecting 500 people to show up. We do need to advertise the unit greatly. We plan on working with all of our partners. The governor said it best the other day, as well as the people from California Department of Public Health. It's going to take all of us, meaning county, public health, the cities, the community-based organizations, the schools. It's going to take all of us to move through this process. And again, testing is one of those components that they are starting to hold the counties to a higher standard. They want to see increased numbers. So even though it would be ideal to test 500 people in a day, we know that's not going to happen the first day, week, or maybe even several weeks. But we plan on, and that again, the nice thing about this unit is we're allowed to move it wherever we want. So if it turns out that it would be better served in Huron, we can work with Fresno to move it there for a day. If it turns out it'd be better served between Kettleman City and Avenel, we can move it there versus Corcoran, and we have, we just have the ability to move it as we see fit, which we haven't seen with other vendors.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Is that it?
Do we have Richard on the line two waiting? I believe he wants to also give a report. Richard, are you there?
Yes, I am, councilman. If it's, if the council's ready, I'd like to take a minute.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank our county health director, Mr. Ed Hill, for coming on. I asked him to do this when he advised me yesterday that this would be taking place in the city of Avenel. And he confirmed with me that this would be National Guard. I want to make it clear, I wasn't aware that it was National Guard members until confirmed yesterday. Going back to the meeting that Mr. Hill pointed out in his presentation last Tuesday, the board was notified by Mr. Ed Hill that the federal government had offered to provide free mobile testing. It was very limited information. There was no mention that this would be National Guard. I know because I went back and I listened to the tape again yesterday. And so as I listened to the tape, I heard myself ask a lot of questions about this plan, because that day we were sat with the million dollars of CARES funds on the table that the board approved on July 14th. We were set last Tuesday, as Ed mentioned, he was going to present to the board the four vendors that responded to our RFP. And so I was very much looking forward to it when I, we didn't even get to hear who the four vendors were, what they offered, what their plans or strategy is. Because when Ed mentioned the possibility of free mobile testing, one of my colleagues on the board made a motion to go with the free mobile testing and to table the million dollars at that point and execute this free mobile testing plan. It passed on a three to two vote, Supervisor Nevz and myself voted no on it. I voted no on it for reasons of things like this. We weren't given a detailed plan. We just weren't, and I can vote in confidence on that. The, Mr. Hill has for the last four or five Tuesdays in a row publicly told the board of supervisors that we have an issue with this virus amongst the meatpacking plant, the ag industry, including farm workers. And the third one that he mentioned, I can't remember that right now. But so we do have an issue with farm workers. And so we do need them to get tested. I've worked with Ed before we went to RFP. We spent about 30 days working our way through and trying to identify the problems that come. the problems that come, the challenges that come with testing farm workers. There is a trust issue up and down the state, around the country where you try to test farm workers. There is a trust issue to that, so that's, that's why you're not reaching them. Uh, you have to bring personnel that speak their language. So we need Spanish-speaking doctors, nurses, Spanish-speaking medical staff. And you have to go to them in one way or another. So, uh, two weeks ago, I presented to the board a game plan that I put work in. Uh, the board had gave me the green light, uh, to go ahead and work through the Catholic Church chain of command, which I did. I reached out, um, I got, uh, leadership in Kings County. Then, uh, that leader, uh, sent word out to the Catholic churches, including Avonale. I did get one call back already, Father Caesar from Our Lady of Lourdes, um, Catholic Church in Corcoran. And so what we're doing is the research I did and talking to leadership in Texas, they tell me that to test farm workers, they're testing on Sunday morning in the, um, um, at the Catholic churches and the parking lot. You do it early in the morning, you bring your mobile testing unit out. The family social distance, the fathers, the nuns, they come out, they bless the families, they got some music playing, and you get the testing done. It's a place of sanctuary, so you get over that trust issue. You have the Spanish-speaking, uh, medical staff there. So I was looking forward to that, but I need the, uh, RFP, um, process to go through to do that. And so as Mr. Hill is saying that perhaps the board would, uh, vote to allocate the million dollars of CARES funding to him, so him and his staff can do it, I still need to hear his game plan. Are there Spanish-speaking personnel guaranteed, uh, to be there? And, uh, where would you do it? So going back to this, you know, and I'm a wrap-up. I want to be clear to the community of Avonale and to the city council. Nobody, including myself, has worked harder to protect the people of Kings County during this COVID pandemic than Mr. Ed Hill and his team at the Kings County Public Health Department. His intentions here are good. I, uh, from day one going back to March, I worked very closely with Ed. I have a lot of confidence in him. When he told me that it would be uniformed National Guard members coming to Avonale, I gave him my opinion from, from my time in the community of Avonale. And being your representative of the twelve years, I said, Ed, this is the one time that I have to let you know I don't agree with this plan, but let's hear from leadership. So again, I thank Mr. Hill for being here, uh, being on the line right now to answer any further questions. He gave you the information. Um, I'm trying to give you my background. Uh, and I would just ask that if you, as the council's, the leader of, of, of Avonale and you have the pulse on the community, if you feel this is something you want, I would just ask that we go one thousand percent to promote it? So there's no fear or anxiety amongst the farm worker community and Kettleman or Avonale? Because that's, that's where my concern is here. Ed is doing his job. He need, he wants to get people tested. I want to get people tested. We're right there on that. We just have different, um, ideas on how to do it on this time. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it with there and I'll stay on, uh, for any questions as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like to, uh, may I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, uh, I feel disappointed at this time that the county, uh, decided these, to do this, to send the National Guard. I can see the benefits, but I, I also see the concerns of my community. Yesterday, when, when I was notified, I actually started talking to people, community members, farm workers. And no one agreed on bringing the National Guard for that issue or any other issue. They got many concerns regarding what is in the news, but, uh, you know. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of fear in our community. Uh, when something like this happens, I don't think that somebody can dictate, we're going to take this to any community without at least doing a survey, talking to community, talking to the leaders of the community, and like, like, like Mr. Vali mentioned, working together, agreeing on something, moving in the same direction. As it is right now, I really appreciate what the county is doing with the pre-testing, even though there's still a lack of, uh, participation from community. One of the reasons is that day, it's in the morning, it's on Tuesday. Like you mentioned, farm workers are working, they get home late. Even they, most of them work even on Saturday. Sunday, it is the best day and they do go to church, most of them. So I think that's a very good idea, trying to get, and to get up to churches, participate, to help. But at this time, uh, I'll be opposed to bringing the National Guard to our community. I did talk to many, many residents, many, many farm workers at different levels, and, and I didn't find one person to agree on bringing the National Guard. So I would like for the county and whoever is in charge when making those decisions to reach out to community, to reach out to our leaders, to work to you. I'm very disappointed and now I'll be opposing this and I'll do whatever I can do to, uh, listen to our community and do the best, what, what is the best for them. So thank you, Richard, and I'd also like to thank Ed Hill for doing his best. I know he's doing his job, but I think he also needs to listen to our community. Thank you.
I have a question for Ed Hill. Ed, you still on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
If the community thought this wasn't, if the leadership here thinks this is not a good thing for the community, what would that mean to any testing or the CARES money to test in Avonale?
So if Avonale doesn't want this resource, um, and by the way, to, to address a couple of things that Supervisor Valley brought up that I failed to mention in my report, uh, the staff on the unit does speak Spanish, as well as I will be deploying my own medical staff with it again, because they will be in training and they will be there to, uh, support the process and they are Spanish-speaking. Um, if, if Avonale doesn't support this, we won't bring the resource to Avonale. We'll deploy it somewhere else in the county, uh, Hanford, Lamar, whoever else will take it. Again, it's, it's a free resource that, it, it would be a shame to send back. Um, and again, I, I know that the National Guard stigma is, is what's the sticking point here. I would just like to reiterate that, that, that uniformed staff is only like four people. They're the admin staff and they're only going to be there for two weeks and then it will be my staff doing the administrative work. But to your question, that million dollars, you know, it's up to the board of supervisors. This is also something that I didn't include in my report. As Supervisor Valley mentioned, the board voted, uh, for me to pursue this federal resource, to deploy it, you know, in the county, uh, extending the RFP for thirty days so that we have the opportunity to see if the resource will work. Um, and so we will continue down that path because that's what I was directed to do by the board. Um, if this resource doesn't work, that one million dollars is still there. Um, again, I'd like to just, you know, reiterate that it won't last. Uh, again, if we go a private vendor, it's only going to be about six thousand tests at the maximum. Um, so, and we've got to start looking for the long-term picture here because again, I don't see this ending anytime soon.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I have another question. Now, given that this, this, uh, this funding, this programs that are for free, is something that will, you know, it benefits the city, it benefits the, the county's more at a county level to be able to, to reopen. But if, let's say this, the leadership here, here in Avonale says no to, you know, to, to, to bring in those resources to Avonale. Are Avonale residents limited from going to any testing units that are open in the cities that do take it? Let's say Lamar, Hanford. Um, can Avonale residents go, you know, I think rather than, you know, voluntarily, knowing that the sites are open on Sundays?
Yes, thank you for that question. We will treat this site just like we do the day reporting center, which means we can, we'll take everybody, even if they're not from Kings County. So if they choose to travel to one of the other cities where it's available, it will be available to them.
Also, uh, Madam Mayor, if, if I could add to that, um, I would, I would also, uh, continue to do my part at the board, um, to, uh, advocate to bring the million dollars back on the table that we approved on July fourteenth in the first place. Um, and the board would have the two choices of either the RFP, um, to see what these private vendors, uh, could do. I'm very interested in their game plan. But I'm also happy to know that Ed Hill has Spanish-speaking staff, um, and that they'll be pre-trained. So either way, we, uh, we would have a team and I would ask the board to allow me to, uh, go back down the path of, um, working, uh, with the Catholic churches. I would love to, uh, uh, talk to the father there, uh, in Avonale and set up a, a nice event on a Sunday morning and either bring the private vendor or Mr. Hill and his staff to Avonale to do it the way that, that I thought would work best and get over some of those challenges that have already been, um, identified. And I'll, and I do just want to lastly say, as a six-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps, um, I have nothing but respect for the men and women, uh, in uniform. It's no one's fault, it's not yours, it's not mine, it's not Mr., uh, uh, Hill's fault. But, uh, let's be very obvious here. There is, uh, images of the last four years in this nation of those kind of uniforms. Um, those are not positive images and I'm not going to go into death on them. I think we're all intelligent enough to know, uh, what we've been seeing and, and it's just not, uh, positive at that time. And I just don't, I don't think it's the right fit, uh, for any of the communities, uh, that I represent in District Two. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez? Okay. Um, I have one question. Um, and I'm just going to throw it out there. If the National Guard was coming with the testing on Sunday, why couldn't they come early and set up across from the Catholic Church in Avonale? If you've already made some of those contacts, Mr. Valley? And let the Catholic Church ease them through that process?
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that question.
Madam Mayor, if that question is to me, and it sounds like it is, again, I just found out about this yesterday, uh, close to noon. I just found out that it was, uh, uniformed National Guard members yesterday. Again, the board was not told this on the day we voted, uh, to pursue the, uh, free, uh, government, um, mobile testing. Again, I was a no vote on that, so the, uh, I can't answer your question because there's, I've done, uh, know the work on that, um, uh, on that issue as far as, uh, trying to, uh, work with the Catholic Church in Avonale to do anything. But I, I would look forward to that opportunity, um, uh, after the board makes a decision this Tuesday.
What decision will they be making this Tuesday?
What's that?
What decision will they be making this Tuesday?
Well, as Ed mentioned, um, there still is an RFP on the table. There's four private vendors. There is still a million dollars in CARES funding, uh, that was tabled this past Tuesday that the board could vote, uh, to use it, uh, to go with either a good plan by one of the private, uh, vendors or, um, go with the plan that, um, Ed is mentioning tonight. Again, a plan that, uh, he just shared with me yesterday, that his staff could come out and do mobile testing. Uh, that wasn't, uh, mentioned, uh, prior to this as well. So again, I look forward to working with my colleagues on Tuesday. Uh, because in my opinion, we've wasted a lot of time. Farm workers are not getting tested in Kings County. It's dangerous. We're not going to get out of this. Uh, where only is protected is our most vulnerable, right? We've all heard that. It, it doesn't matter if Avonale and the city limits, and the city limits of, uh, Hanford, Lamar and Corcoran, if we do one hundred percent good and everyone masks up and the virus goes away in those city limits, as long as farm workers, meatpacking employees are still getting sick like they are, that comes back and reinfects and we have a problem. We need to meet that problem head-on and we're just not doing it. And Mr. Hill knows that from being at the board of supervisors. I'm very vocal about the fact that we're wasting time here. We should have, uh, moved, uh, forward on this. Uh, Ed and I wasted at least thirty days on a plan, working with a private doctor, Spanish-speaking doctors to come down and have this mobile testing already. After thirty days of work and a lot of meetings and hours spent on it, we found out, um, at the county that legally we had a RFP. We thought we could self-source this. Uh, so then we waste time putting out to an RFP. We come back last Tuesday, we're getting ready to open the RFP. Ed says there's, uh, I got a phone call yesterday, the federal government is offering free mobile testing. I argued against it. I said, there's no way the federal government's going to come in and save the day, especially without a plan. I don't trust it. I voted no. I wanted the million dollars to execute the RFP. Here we are now and finding out yesterday it's National Guard. So it's, I'll support whatever you want to do, but you're the leadership. If you want to do it, I'm here to support. We just need to promote it. So Pete, there's no, I do not want to have fear or anxiety amongst, uh, the Hispanic people and the farm working, uh, community. They're dealing with too much already, working in extreme heat, working in smoke and working in a COVID, um, environment and it's not fair and it breaks my heart. And I'm doing everything I can at the county level to change that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm confused. Last Tuesday, two days, three days ago, they voted?
The week, the week before that. We didn't have a meeting on Tuesday because of the holiday.
The week before that, they voted to go with what?
The free mobile testing that Mr. Ed Hill is presenting to you tonight.
That's, that's been a week and a half ago?
Yes.
And we just found out about it yesterday?
Including myself, yes. And I called you, uh, within minutes of finding out. So you could thank me for notifying you, I did my job.
So next Tuesday, if they voted on the mobile testing a week ago Tuesday, what are they voting on next Tuesday?
We have the option of, um, Mr. Hill, uh, presenting the RFP. He's sitting on four different game plans right now.
I thought you were going to, up thirty days. I thought you were going to, they said to push that up thirty days.
No, Mr. Uh, Hill asked the, uh, vendors if they would keep their bids, um, available for thirty days. And they, and they agreed to do it. So that gives us the opportunity. In a perfect world, um, we would have tested already and, and had results of the mobile testing. We were told that they could start right away, they could hit the ground. So the board said, okay, we'll vote for the free mobile testing. When we come back in two weeks, we'll see if it works. If it doesn't work, we could open up the RFP. Now we're going to come back on Tuesday, uh, next week. And, um, unless Mr. Hill has something new for me, uh, I, where I stand right now, we're not going to have any testing done, uh, on Tuesday for the board to, uh, to judge anything by.
Okay, I think we're clear on the dates then.
Ms. Willa, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know if it's for Ed or Richard, but how far, if, for more rat today to when the time of mobile, a private vendor could spin up and actually be in the fields or wherever they need to go, what's the timeframe we're talking about?
That, that would depend, that, that would depend on, uh, uh, the board voting. Uh, I would assume it would be another two weeks and that goes to, um, everything I've been voc- uh, vocal about. That's two more weeks of a delay. There's been so much delay on this issue.
I, I understand, I, I've listened to the calls myself. You, you think, you think a, a private firm after the vote on Tuesday, if that was to go that way, could spin up and be on board and boots on the ground in two weeks from Tuesday? Is that, is that what you're guessing?
I can't answer that. I'd, I'd defer to Mr. Hill. He's the only one at this point who knows, um, who the private vendors are. The board legally is not allowed to know who they are, what their game plans is right now. Uh, so Madam Mayor, you'd like, uh, Mr. Hill to attempt to answer that.
As Madam Mayor, to the commission, uh, I'm not confident that a, a private vendor would be able to, most of the resources and the staff to deploy this in a matter of two weeks. Um, and then, uh, just for clarification, the, the board directed me to pursue the federal testing resource. Uh, we worked through those details to get that resource moving here, one of which was scheduling sites. Um, and then, uh, in addition to that, uh, they asked us to extend that RFP for thirty days to give us an opportunity to get this federal source here, have an opportunity to evaluate it. And then- opportunity to evaluate it, and then make the decision on the RFP. Next Tuesday, we're going to the board for an update on the efforts on the mobile testing site with, from the feds, as well as hopefully presenting the RFP scores, as well as any other options, like Mr. Valley mentioned recently, because we've finally gotten some staff from the California Department of Public Health, there's an opportunity for public health to do this testing again. So the one thing that I'd like to share, again, because I kind of briefed over it really quickly in my update, COVID changes every minute, and we get new information every day. And as a matter of fact, this is not the only mobile testing site that's being offered through the state. While I was working through the details for this one, another one from the Emergency Medical Services Authority, they reached out to us and said, we've got mobile testing for you, but you need to give us a location by Monday, the 8th. So it's always changing like that. We get more and more details every time. I wish it was better. Unfortunately, it's been the reality of COVID. Again, that's what we had to do with the testing at the day reporting center. The state notified us. We had to give them a location in two days. We would love to have more opportunity to, you know, give a lot more information. It's just the situation we're in. I wish it were better.
I would like to give my closing comments. And with all respect to the ones recommending or supporting this idea, you know, I would like to say the, we really need farm workers to be tested. We need it on a weekend. We need it with Spanish-speaking nurses or doctors, whoever may be taking the test. But let's be realistic. The National Guard at this time, in Spanish news, in English news, they've been associated with immigration, with the, with the DEA, with ICE. I can guarantee that if you bring the National Guard, and if you want the farm workers to come and be tested, you know, there's, there's going to be a lack of participation. And I think that's not the goal. And I think we can find ways to have them tested safely, without any fear. And I just wish, like I mentioned before, I wish we would get into this conversation before it's agreed to bring, you know, a group, mobilized unit, without even community members knowing about it, leaders of the community not knowing about it, you know. So I just hope that you realize this message to the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Is anyone else?
Yeah, pretty much, I think, I think, you know, we should be updated a little bit about what's going on at a county level so we're able to, you know, put some input on what, we know our community better than anybody else. So we should be able to, you know, give some feedback on what's, what the community's perception of this would be. You know, if the issue would be the perception, I would, I would suggest to, you know, have sites somewhere else and people go to them. But that would be, you know, are we looking at direction, action, or this is just a discussion?
We have to let the county know what we want.
On my end, it would be a no.
Yours would be a no. Councilman Hernandez? No. So it looks like, Mr. Hill, the City of Avonel is requesting a different mode of testing here for our community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow council members. We will continue through our processes. And then I just also would like to state that at any time that you would like an update from me, you can, you know, reach me at my office. And then, again, Mr. Stivers is on the emergency operations call every Monday as well, where we provide this information. Again, I apologize that the information comes so fast and so quick. I can apologize. So I'm blue in the face. It's just the situation we're in, and I don't think I'm going to be able to change it. But I just want to reassure you that I'm doing the best I can to get the testing resources, not only in the areas that it needs to be, but sustainable for the duration of this event.
Thank you for your efforts for the, not only the City of Avonel, but for the entire county. I know we're in a spot, and we're not going to be able to dig out of it until we get some better testing and a lot more positives. So at this time, we'll be going into closed session, and right about now is when we're usually coming out of closed session. So I'm going to have a hard time estimating for the public when we will be back open. Got any ideas how long?
We could try to keep it to 45 minutes, but it may go an hour.
Okay. So we are going to try our best to get back in 45 minutes, which will be about 6:50. Just letting our public know, since our staff that hang out there and wait for us. Thank you very much. Wise, can you get us into closed session as fast as you can? Are you going to go get wrong?
Will we come out of closed session?
Yeah, we know that. Okay. Hi, everyone.
There they are. Want to tell them where I? Texture?
Okay.
Are you there? Are you there?
It's muted.
Just FYI, the city council shows as being muted still.
It shows muted.
Testing one, two, testing. You can hear me, Umberto? Testing one, two, testing.
This is Tony and I. It's really well.
Mr. Schultz, you can hear us?
I can, thank you.
Awesome.
So they said that the translation is not only at the Avenue of Community Events.
It is.
And this one is only English, right? In Facebook, it's only English, right?
On this, when they sign on, they choose whether they want Spanish or English. On Zoom, when they come on Zoom, they choose. There was a big screen at the first one.
We'll take them to the community events page?
No, we'll take them into the translation page. Aren't I right, Tony? Okay, you guys. When people log on to Zoom, they get to choose whether to hear the meeting in Spanish or English. Okay. Please look at the instructions on screen. We are proud to be having our meeting translated tonight. And of course, all new things take a while to get used to. Want to welcome everyone back. Sorry that our closed session took so long. I need to report out that the council approved Resolution 2020-38, which was to defer the annual payment for the Avonel sand rags. They had requested the payment deferment because of COVID. They have no races, which means they have no income.
One more second, please.
I made it be seconded. But clarify that, you know, it wasn't forgiven, it's just extended.
Yeah, it was a... Yeah, we didn't forgive that the payment was moved down a year. So they still owe the same amount. But we just moved the payments down. Okay, if that's clear. Then our next item of business is 7B, which we moved up, is special presentation. So Melissa, would you step around? To this side. Tonight is probably the last city council meeting that Melissa Whitten will be sitting in that seat. And she has chosen to retire. Even though she will be city manager until October 16th, her last active day on the job will be September 14th. And you know that I'm a person of few words. So we got you a little something.
I don't know what to say without getting commercial.
Well, open it. Yes. It won't. Yes, you will need a lot of those in the next week or so. Everyone knows Melissa. She has to have the Kleenex box closed. Okay, I can wait. I can say a few more words than that. Now you gotta come, you gotta come back, Melissa. You might sit there in the box. Melissa's been with the city since April 1984, and she's served 11 years in several capacities before being made city manager in 1995. That means that she has served the city for 25 years and worked with more than 13 city councils. And that's a lot of different personalities that Melissa has worked with. She has represented Avonel on many boards and commissions, and she has seen Avonel in the great times, the bad times, the fun times, and the tense times. And she is, as someone said recently, a walking encyclopedia of Avonel history. Melissa, you already have the heart of the city. And so we would like to present you with the key to the city. And we know how you love plaques. Want to make sure you have lots of things in when you walk. This says, distinguished years of service presented to Melissa Whitten, city manager for the city of Avonel, administrator of Avonel Operating Authority, community leader, contributor, supporter, mentor. In recognition and acknowledgement of your 36 years of service, 25 years as city manager, we hereby thank you and honor you for your service in the community. Service from the heart with sincere appreciation, the Avonel City Council, Avonel city staff, and the citizens of Avonel. And this is a this is a certificate of recognition presented to Melissa Whitten for 36 years of service from the Kings County Board of Supervisors, who know you well. I think everyone in the state knows you well. And this is Senate recognition of certificate. Certificate of recognition. In recognition of your retirement from the city of Avonel after 36 years of service, your commitment and dedication to Avonel and its residents has been exemplary and true model of the potential of any community. There is no doubt that as city manager, you have poured your heart and soul into this wonderful community. You will be missed, but also wishing you a joyful retirement. Thank you for everything you championed for Avonel. Honorable Melissa Portado.
I didn't even know what to say. The day has come. That was certainly anticipated, thinking of all things you need to do. Walking away is hard. But I love enough. I did a little bit of calculation. I could prepare over 250 documents and agendas just for this day. One of the founding of RDA, I've been through 25. What else have I done? I was breaking these things down. Because that really, the number of how many documents I've done now, and to understand that.
Yes.
I have to say, I loved just about everything that was in. When I became city manager, my team, the first team were our bonds, wearing the tall. I had no idea what that meant. It was sink or swim.
See, they started trading really quickly. And learn how to swim. Oh.
People want to hear you. You're going to hear Melissa.
Anyway, I just want to thank you. It's been I can't think of a bigger honor than to serve my home. And for those that, you know, the decisions that are made, you want to think that the decisions are going to be good and accepted by everyone. But sometimes you have to make the decisions that are hard, knowing that there's a bigger picture to look at. And there have been difficult times that I have to say, the councils I have worked with, I can't imagine the weight that's been on their shoulders, but we've shouldered it together. And I just want to thank you all, and also to all the other council members that are here and those that have passed. It's been an honor to serve, but it's been an honor to serve this community. This is my hometown, and I love it always well. And just thank you, this, I'm honored. As I tell my children, I told my staff, my co-host. I would like to encourage any in this, our virtual world, I know there's a lot of you out there that would like to congratulate Melissa. I wish her well. And I encourage all of you to do that and flood the city hall with your remembrances and your good wishes for her. Okay, our next item on the agenda is mayor council member successor agency items for consideration. Is consider the appointment of one applicant individual to, okay, to fill our council seat.
We need to do the minutes.
Huh? We didn't do the consent calendar?
No.
So let's consider the consent calendar right now. Does everyone have a chance to read minutes in the consent calendar? Do we have a motion?
Let me make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do it in a second. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez, Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Preciado?
Aye.
Mayor Woolley?
Aye.
Now we can move on?
Yes.
Okay. So our last special city council meeting, we interviewed two applicants who were interested in filling the vacant seat for city council. At this point, we need to make, council needs to make a decision. Is there a discussion?
Mayor Woolley, I would like to open nominations for for the vacancy, to consider the appointment of one of the vacancy for the city council.
So none of the applicants are present?
Yes.
Yes. Julio, she couldn't be present because it's the harvest and she gets off at eight o'clock.
I didn't see her, I'm sorry. Okay.
I open nominations.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Mary Lou for new city council member.
You're nominating Lourdes? Any other nominations? Would you like to close nominations?
You gotta say it orally.
I need a motion and also a second, please.
We need a motion and a second.
He made a motion.
Oh, he made.
He said yes.
So Councilman Ramirez motion to close nomination? And there's somebody second the nomination?
I'll second.
Councilman Hernandez? Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Preciado? Mayor Woolley?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Lourdes is now our new city council member, and I will read her oath.
You want to come up here? Are you gonna do it up here in the center?
Yeah. I?
Aye.
Lulu? Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States and the state of California, that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or progressive evasion, and I will faithfully discharge the duties upon on which I'm about to enter.
Now, you have a seat.
We don't have a seat.
You have a seat.
We can sit here.
Carrizales or Carrizano?
I know that sometimes our actions are a little hard to understand with face masks and mics and everything, but I would like everyone to welcome our new Avonel City Council member, Lourdes Lulu Carrizales.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Okay, the next item, 6B, is to consider the resolution rescinding the rules and reorganization of the city council as adopted April 20th, 1982, to establish new policies and procedures. Okay, we have discussion and direction on this.
This was actually staff was requested to schedule reorganization in the policies thereof for a study session which we held at the last meeting prior to the last meeting in August. And there was also an agenda item where staff sought direction as to how council would like to go. And the direction, as we understand it, was to bring a policy back. This is a draft, so it was based on Laguna Miguel resolution that we reviewed, but also trying to fashion it for the city of Avonel. And for those of you, some of the, most of council members know, but for our new council member, in 1982, the city incorporated in 1979, and there was action taken in 1982 as to how the mayor, Mayor Protim, would be appointed. It was a very simple policy. It was by motion. It wasn't by resolution at the time. It had maybe four lines. So how, how the process would work is after a general election, a new mayor, Mayor Protim would be appointed, and they were appointed by the majority of council, and that they would serve for two years.
Melissa, elected. Elected.
Elected, I'm sorry, elected. But they would serve for two years at a time until the next general election, and then council would consider electing another mayor, Mayor Protim, or keeping the same mayor. What this does, it expands kind of how that's done, and it actually fills out, I believe, in a better way as to how the process would work. As far as selecting Mayor Protim, when a Mayor Protim would be appointed, I had included one year, council may want to do two years. It would be totally to council the way you'd like to go. But it states in odd years when the new mayor, Mayor Protim, would be seated, and how it would happen in even years, which is an election, our election year. It also states what happens when Mayor Protim resigns or steps down as to how that would work, to make sure that that was clear. But it does include that we did not have before was that in the event that the city council member holding the mayor resigns or is removed, and there's a vacancy, the office, as a member of the city council, the mayor, Mayor Protim, oh, let's see, I'm getting lost, and mayor serve until the city council appoints someone else to come in. But it also states that, item number five, that Mayor Protim will hold the office, and they're holding office at the pleasure of the other council members. So if they're now, I can't say the situation, I'm not really certain, but what it does allow is that by a majority vote of the city council, they may remove the mayor or the mayor Protim with or without cause. That's probably the most significant part of this. But again, our policy that we have in place is, it has worked for many years, the last 40 years, but, or excuse me, 38 years, but it's probably time to kind of redefine that, have it more precise so everybody understands it. Again, this is just based on the conversations that we've had, based on the draft that we had. This is a draft for this council to review, and if there are changes you'd like to make, that's absolutely fine. Or if you don't like this draft, we can bring something else back. But it was a place to start as far as reviewing some type of policy for the appointment of Mayor Protim.
Does there any discussion on the side of?
Yes, I would like to see some changes, for instance, number 10. I think that one should be removed. I believe that as council elects a mayor, Mayor Protim, council should be able also to remove a mayor and Mayor Protim at any time within the two-year period without having to wait for elections or
That's only this particular election. That's only this year.
Right.
Yeah.
Because of the
Yeah.
I want the resolution to I would like the resolution not to set any times or restrictions at all.
If I may, this is Mike Shulte. So I, I think Mike has addressed this, Mike Farley, in an earlier meeting, but I think that you could have this resolution passed without any particular dates mentioned, but this can't go into effect until after the next election. So if you, in one way or another, it can't go into effect. If you were to pass this resolution and then try to execute a a decision to remove the mayor or the vice mayor, anybody else before the next election, I'm, we're fairly certain that that would be a violation of, of the government code. So you can have this without dates, but it won't, it's not effective until, or it can't legally be effective. Again, I think Mike addressed this, you know, anybody can drive the wrong way down a one-way street, but that doesn't make it legal. So this language is there to basically say when it goes into effect, just like every law at the state level or, or any city level, you have to have an effective date, and the effective date has to take into account existing law, and existing law right now for the city is that those people elected into those positions were elected, and you, the council doesn't have the authority to undo an election in that way. So happy to answer questions, but I didn't necessarily think that was going to come up tonight, but I'm happy to address it.
If I may, I think, you know, like you mentioned, Michael did address it, but the last that we heard from him is that it would be possible, that that was his last clarification that he gave council.
Yeah, so I, so like Mike said, anything's possible, but it is definitely illegal. And when I say illegal, not like, you know, you're going to get jailed, it's just a violation of the law. The government code is clear. The, the existence right now, the legal existence right now for individuals on the council are that they were either elected into those positions or appointed into those positions. And to the extent that somebody was elected into that position, it can't be changed until that person's term is up. So you could have this go into effect with the next election cycle, but you can't do it right. And when I say can't, feel free, that's kind of what Mike said, feel free. Just understand that it is clearly to us a violation of existing California government code.
Just for reference, can you cite the government code you're referring to?
I cannot. I am happy to look it up. I think Mike cited it last time.
You know, I think there's a misunderstanding, because he clearly stated, Mr. Farley, that this applies to, we're abiding by the regular California law conduct, but that can be exempt if council has its own ordinance, like the CIO Corona. We can change that, and that's what we're trying to do today without having any restrictions or dates. Council should be able to reorganize at any time within any timeframe. That's what we're trying to change, and that's not illegal. That's not against the law. I've seen many other cities reorganized before the two-year term expires.
So
Let's clarify that we're trying to make our own ordinance regarding reorganizing city council. And I believe that is legal, if it's chosen by the majority of the council.
I completely agree with you. It is legal.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to do, without any restrictions on dates.
Then there is, then that is illegal.
How can that be?
Well, don't
Can I provide us with, with, with California code? How can we be talking about without knowing the code? Have you been talking this for months and months and months? And we still don't have the right information regarding what's the penal code number that restricts that?
At council, I don't think it's a penal code number. I'm honestly not here to argue with you. I'm just here to tell you, to advise you. So my advice is you shouldn't do that. And if you don't want to take our advice, it's neither here nor there by me.
I also ask, what was the legal, the legal and right procedure to reorganize council? Because I've seen that happen in many other cities through the state, and they have done it. And I asked, and we were supposed to be informed with that information, and we still don't have it either. Are you aware of any city that reorganized before the two-year term?
I, no, I'm not.
So we asked for guidance from legal council about three months ago regarding how to reorganize, and we still don't have direction.
I'm indifferent to how you want to characterize this council. I'm telling you right now, as we sit here, if you think that you have the legal authority to make that change right now, you go right ahead. I'm telling you that I am recommending against it. I'm advising against it. It's a violation of the government code. But, but I'm not telling you what to do. You go ahead.
So council member Ramirez has due for that So council member Ramirez has you for that, that. You said it, it's not legal. So do you have a reference number?
Government.
Government code?
No, I, I don't have that with me. And, and if, if that's your basis for moving forward is that your attorney showed up without a particular code and advised against something, then feel free to move forward. I, you know, here's the reality of this, there probably, there, there may or may not be a risk associated with it. It all depends on whether somebody complains about the fact that you do that. Once you do that and you change out your mayor, if you, if that's your intention is to do that, you do mess with contractual structuring and authority and all the stuff that Mike Farley discussed. So I, I think, if, if you'll pardon my candidness, I think you're fully aware of the issue or you wouldn't be asking for that date to be taken off. But all I can do is advise you and I've advised you. And if, if you don't want to follow my, my advice, I'm fine with that, it really doesn't bother me.
So, well, I, I just believe that we do need a new ordinance regarding how to reorganize council, city council at any given time. And we need to actually discuss it and take action.
This isn't an action item tonight.
So. And.
It's for discussion and direction of any addition.
And I have, and I have requested it to be a study session and then take action in the agenda. And I didn't to be placed on the agenda with action.
So if, 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 if at the council's request, I'm happy to provide a memo with the code section for that, for staff to make changes to this or consider changes to this. But I'll, I'll let you tell me whether you actually want to see the code or, or whether that's something you prefer not to see.
Mr. Schulte, would it happen to be of the government code? I believe it says AB four, four nineteen. Does that ring a bell at all?
You know, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Melissa, yeah, I just, I don't have that all in front of me.
That's okay.
Yeah, and I apologize, I was not intending on, I, I didn't necessarily think that would be a discussion. I thought that was sort of clear from the prior discussions. As a practical matter, consider that, you know, consider that the legislature of the state of California decided that they wanted to change out the governor who was elected by the people. And so they just decided to do it. Of course, people would say that's, it's a violation of due process on any, on any level. So I'm happy to provide briefing on that or provide a specific government code. My issue with that is why, why waste the time if people don't want to follow the government code? Then providing it usually doesn't resolve that.
Well, you know, the only, the reason why I made the question that, Michael, the other attorney had already clarified, we asked, you know, what would be the, the due process to follow? Adopting ordinance, you know, putting, putting it, putting it out there to, to discuss, open nominations, closed nominations, et cetera. And we finished the meeting with a yes from him. That's why it's, it's a little bit concerning that, you know, he said yes, now you said no, but it's.
No, 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 I, I'm sorry, I'm not going to let you characterize it that way. He said, if you want to do that, you go ahead. But he clearly said it was not appropriate to do it prior to this next election cycle. That was clear. And, and if you're trying to mischaracterize that, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. Prior council said the same thing I'm saying, you go ahead and do it against our advice.
Well, for instance, let's go back to the ordinance that you presented us, this is C O Corona.
I'm sorry?
The, the ordinance, the sample that you gave us.
Oh, it was Laguna Miguel.
Laguna Miguel. Okay, they were able to, to approve the resolution without a timeframe. It didn't say anything about until the next election day of time, right? And they were able to, and they were, they were able to adopt that resolution, correct?
I just had a copy of the resolution and it had a number.
Which was approved by council. And it's, and it's in effect right now that council can reorganize at any time. And didn't mention anything about, it wasn't not legal and it had to be after election date. So I don't see how they were able to do it, but for us it's illegal to do it.
Our legal counsel is here for.
They're asking legal counsel to see if he can answer that question.
Sorry about your.
So we do have a, we do have a sample ordinance that was passed in Laguna Miguel. It was presented to us. And he said that we could adopt a resolution similar to that one. And that one didn't have a restriction, a time, didn't say anything about elections. And it was approved and it's in effect.
It, so in Laguna Miguel, did it affect any elected individuals? That's the question, because that's, that's due process. If it affects an elected individual and you're taking away that elected individual's rights, you don't have, as a council, you don't have the authority to do that.
Yeah, but let's clarify that it's an elected official by council, not by the people, not by the community, not about the registered voter, correct?
You're talking about the new resolution or prior?
The appointment of, of the mayor and Mayor Protim.
It's not an appointment, it's an election.
Yeah, it was an election.
Elected by who?
Isn't it by council?
They're elected by council, it's still an election.
Well, but then it is the same way, the way that they changed their ordinance in Laguna Miguel. Council was able to reorganize council. And they were able to remove mayor or Mayor Protim or whoever it may be and reorganize council. And, 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 and that was elected by council. So it was elected by council, it can be removed by council.
But I think the question is, did they actually utilize it before the next election?
That's right.
I'm assuming they did because in the resolution, which we had a copy of it, it didn't state any restrictions that it had to take into effect after election day. That, we had a copy and it doesn't state that.
Okay, let me ask you something. Do you really want this ordinance passed for the good of the city or do you want to be mayor?
No, that's not the point.
No, I think that is the point.
Okay, I want this resolution, I want council, I won't be here forever. I want council, as they appoint or both elect a mayor and Mayor Protim, they should have the same right to remove them. If they're, if they're not acting.
They will have the same right. The only year it affects is this election year. The only thing it affects is me being mayor until December. Other than that, they can do it at any time. So the question is, do you want this resolution for the benefit of Avonel? Or do you want me gone so you can be mayor?
I want this resolution for the benefit of Avonel.
Well, then the date shouldn't make any problem then.
Well, I would like to listen to.
Unless you want to get rid of the mayor before the election.
I would like to listen to rest of the council.
I would too.
And be polite and be respectful, no need to scream. True respect, Mayor.
You don't need to talk it to death either because you've been told over and over again.
The reason I'm kind of upset because we've been dealing with this new ordinance for the last three months.
Okay.
And that's, that's the, that's the only.
Councilman Hernandez, would you please speak to this so we know where we're going? You don't have anything to say about it? Councilmember Maris?
Well, you know, I would say it, it's just confusing, not going back to, to discuss, but it was confusing the way it was said and the way it's being said now. We can approve this resolution, you know, if. Perhaps take away line number ten, you know, it would just be, you know, something to consult with legal counsel. And if it's not doable, it's not doable, if it's doable, it's doable. But that's where I would incline, you know.
And then the next meeting, it comes up to put on agenda to remove the mayor?
Well, not necessarily unless council decided that. But, you know, he, he said that he was going to get a memo together to speak on the, on the government code.
All right, let me clarify, that memo is not going to say anything different than I'm saying today. I, I, we've already researched this issue and provided extensive information on this. That we could put together ten memos, they're all going to say the same thing. So this is an issue of whether or not you want to follow the advice of legal counsel. And I understand if you don't want to follow the advice of the council. I will say that to the extent that the request to remove paragraph ten affects one particular individual and only one particular individual, pretending that it doesn't, doesn't change it. It, it's not a question of whether or not there was intent, it's a question of whether or not there was effect. And clearly, this is trying to be passed in order to have a, an effect on one particular individual. And there's no missing that, there's no mistaking that. And that in and of itself, that is not our objection to this. Our objection to this is, as requested, to put this into effect while there are still elected individuals who would be affected. That is a violation of due process, it's a violation of the government code. You had rules in place, you just have to follow those rules until they expire, which is the end of the elected term. And so if you don't want to follow those rules or you want to pretend that our advice is confusing when I'm sitting here telling the same thing over and over and over again, I understand. But, and, and I will continue to say, I understand that you want to pretend you don't understand. But our advice is clear. And if you want to act contrary to advice of council, again, you go right ahead. Drive the wrong way down a one-way street, it's not our issue. Our issue is to give advice to the council and whether you follow it or not is your choice.
I believe that the resolution that is not ordinance, we have a resolution, it's a policy, that I believe we could get to the same place and, and what the desires of, of those on council would like. Number five basically addresses that. It, it mentions about removing Mayor Mayor Protim with or without cause. But based on the information that I have and after reviewing the minutes to, Mr. Farley, to me, made it clear that any type of policy that the council had would not go into effect until after this, the election. And so number ten, I, I added number ten because of what we had been advised of by our attorney. I think we can get there, I truly do. It's, we, it's a matter of three meetings. And I'm not making light of this, I don't, I just am concerned, okay? But I, I believe, and if you want to add something to the policy as to, I, I think it's, it pretty well covers how you select the mayor, how you select Mayor Protim. If you would like to do it every two years, I just put one year, it's up to council. But it does provide that authority for council to do things if, for whatever reason, the majority council would like to remove the Mayor Mayor Protim. But number ten, I believe, is, and I can't tell you to do something that potentially could not be correct or is wrong. I added number ten to make sure that, hopefully that we're in compliance with law. I think we can get there, I truly do. But there have to be some, some steps and rules that are followed and that's what my advice is. We're looking at three meetings.
Do we want to pass this resolution as is, modifications?
It's not an action, I don't know, it's just discussion.
Just discussion?
Because it was a draft and she wanted the edits to know if we.
So this will come back for, for later.
We'll come back to the next meeting.
Mr. Schulte, this item, it was a draft. As, as just something to, to discuss. If council is ready to, because it's agendized, even though it said discussion direction, would it be appropriate if council chose to go forward and adopt it as is? And not saying that you are, I just wanted to get clarification. Is it allowable that if there were approval by council that it would actually go into effect? Or would it have to wait until the next meeting for this to be adopted? If, if in fact we're following the format that has been presented?
So let me address it just in, in, in say, first off, under normal circumstances, this would require a first reading. It would have to be agendized and say, this is the resolution. This did not go on the agenda as this is our, and you can make changes, right? I mean, you know that, you can make changes to a resolution. But this did not go on the agenda that way, this went on the agenda as a discussion item. And so our opinion, again, you know, I'm not making our firm nor attorneys look good tonight and I apologize to everyone, but our opinion is that this is a discussion item and that this would have to come on the agenda for an approval item. And at that point in time, of course, you could make changes or whatnot, but it would need to come back as an approval. So now let me talk about exceptions to that. I theoretically, there could be an emergency exception, but there's nothing in this, not in the discussion or the document to suggest, you know, an emergency like COVID or, you know, it, it, well, you know, you guys have been passing emergency ordinances for the last four months. So there's nothing in here to suggest that, there's nothing in the discussion to suggest that. And I'd rec, I, I, I would generally, my advice is stay away from that unless you need to. So, so I don't really see any mechanical means within the Brown Act to get there. And I, I will readily admit, along with the rest of you, that sometimes the Brown Act is a real pain in the butt. But it is what it is and it existed before any of us took our jobs. With the exception of your term there. It seems like you've been there since before the Brown Act. So anyways, there you have it, there's my advice is I would not take action on this.
Okay, I, I do have a question just for clarification. You talked about a first reading, but this is a, a resolution, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, it, yeah, you don't, yeah, so it's a resolution, yeah, so just a normal resolution process. But, but you still have to have it as a, that does, so I apologize for saying first reading, but that doesn't change my.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I, I was, wasn't missing.
You are right, you are right. You heard me correct that I got it wrong, yeah.
No, that's okay, I just needed it clarified, thank you.
Sure.
Then I think if it's discussion for direction, it should be brought to, to the next council meeting and we should move, move forward on the agenda.
As it is.
Unless there's any other comments.
Yeah, well, to be straight with this, you know, this all came because we did receive a, a letter from the community asking to reorganize council. There's a process where the community can recall any council member for his position. So what we're looking, when we discuss this, what we're trying to do, we're trying to be more effective regarding reorganizing council. I believe council can have their own ordinance regarding reorganization. That would change the, the process done by the general rule that most cities go over in the state of California. The idea is to save time and money whenever needed. If the community asks for council to be reorganized for whatever the reason may be, so can council have the authority to reorganize without going to the timely recall process and expensive way of reorganizing council. So I believe that was the whole idea, it was nothing personal. But I believe that we need, we need to have something. When we asked, when we asked about three months ago, the process to reorganize council, we were told that you weren't going. we were told that you weren't going through a session, bringing to council, and that never happened. At a meeting, we've got information that they are the meeting. And we've been asking for the proper legal way to reorganize council. Other cities within the state have done it. I don't see why the city of Amenah cannot reorganize council at any given time.
Right, but this does allow you to do that.
And that's what we're trying to do, and also, when I, and when I requested it, I requested has a study session and then an action item during the agenda. And right now, we didn't have a study session to go to, please don't interrupt me, please. So the whole intent was to have a study session to go over these, you know, changes or take, for example, the city of Laguna Miguel, for example. To come up with the ordinance for the city to reorganize. And I specify clearly that we were not looking in a process to remove mayor or mayor pro team. That was up to the rest of the council or majority of the council to decide if it's time to reorganize or not. Not necessarily has to happen today or tomorrow, this year or next year. This is something that we can have under a local government city ordinance to reorganize properly, clearly, and without doing something that is illegal. And I have asked direction from legal counsel and repeated. It's been three, four months and we're not, we're not getting nowhere with this, we're not getting nowhere. So, so this is time that we set it straight, the facts, the rules, regulations. If council, every two years right now is able to council, not the community, council to appoint or elect mayor and mayor pro team, the same council shall have the authority to remove the mayor or mayor pro team by reorganizing. And thus, and thus according to whatever the case may be. This shouldn't be something personal, it shouldn't be to benefit somebody, it should be for the benefit of the community. I think that's why we're here. And I've been asked, and several council members have been asked by the community to bring this into discussion.
But that's where we are.
And that's what we're doing right now.
Right.
So I don't see why the mayor asked me if I want this for my own personal benefit. That is disrespectful and I don't know where you're coming from. And you should be more respectful, this is a public meeting.
May I speak now?
No, I'm not finished. So I just want everybody to know for the record that we're trying to do this for the benefit of the community. To be more professional, to be more effective and to speed the process if there's a case that the community may want to do to the whole process of recall, that council have the authority, have they elected the mayor, mayor to, mayor pro team to have the same authority to reorganize council. And that should be the wording, reorganize, not remove. Not remove or get rid of, or I don't like you, I'm going to remove you. That's not the wording, reorganize, reorganize. And I think we all have the same commitment to serve the community. It don't matter if you're a council member or mayor, mayor pro team. You should have the same objective to make the right decision that will benefit the community. And that's what we're trying to do with this ordinance. It's nothing personal and it should be to benefit anybody. And so I just want to make that point clear.
And if, if, as I said, I believe we can get there, I do, I think we can get there. If, if, on number five, if you don't like remove, can we use reorganize, Mr. Schulte? On number five, instead of remove, can we change the wording to reorganize? Would that be appropriate and still be able to do the same thing?
Yeah, you know, moving words around is, is just handing out candy on Halloween. It's the intent of the, of the resolution that matters. It really comes down to this, the council has the authority to pass this. They can call it remove, they can call it reorganize, they can call it anything they want. And that doesn't change, however, that any resolution that only has an effect on one particular individual is targeted. That's just the way it is and this is targeted. And, and so to pretend that changing words is going to change that, doesn't change it. So if the question is, can you change that word from remove to reorganize? Absolutely. If the question is, does that change my advice on it? The answer is no. Without paragraph 10, this is inappropriate resolution and I still advise against it.
We can change it if you'd rather not have remove and we can change it to reorganize. It's amendment coming back for council to consider. Again, I think it includes what, you know, I'm hearing. And it just that it wouldn't take effect until after the elections, which we have been advised by legal counsel, by government code, that, you know, we should wait until then. And I'm not making light of it, please, please let me finish. I'm not making light of it, but we're talking about three meetings. And if it comes back to council at the next meeting, then there would be two meetings. I think we're there, it's just
Okay.
A matter of getting things in place.
Okay, so the government code, I believe that one applies to communities that do not have an ordinance in place on how to reorganize. Let's clarify that, and I think that's where the misunderstanding is.
Okay.
If, if, you know, if, if a city has their own ordinance, how to reorganize, that's legal. And that oversees the government code that most cities go by, so that's, that's something that we need to verify.
I'm sorry, you have to, you can, you can go more than what the government code says, but you have to at least meet the guidelines of a government code. That sets the standard for us all.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Right, and so I, I just need to know, are we looking at ordinance? Because ordinance then would become part of the municipal code and make it very straightforward. Or are you satisfied with a policy decision, which is by resolution? There's a difference, ordinance, we'd have to list it for public hearing, we'd have a first reading, a second reading, and then the 30 days after that, it would go into effect. So kind of that's my first question, are we looking at ordinance that we want to for long-term? Or is it a policy that we want to put in place? There's a difference in the process as to how we work that.
Well, I think we're looking at a, at a fast process. If a policy, see, that's what we're trying to see to, to meet the guidelines of the government code, to be within the guidelines. So if a policy is what we need, that's what we need.
Right.
And that's what I've been asking legal counsel for the last three months, guidance, and we haven't got it.
Melissa, if I might?
No, you go right ahead.
I think it's my turn at this point. I'm going to kind of settle this issue in that I don't want the city to do anything that's illegal. And I can kind of see the direction it's going by the decisions of the different council members. And so if me being mayor is this big of an issue for the city, then I am going to resign. I will no longer be mayor and then the Mayor Pro Tim can now be mayor as he has wanted to for the last four years when he has been calling the election of Doug Gortier Ovai and myself as illegal and fraudulent. And so I've heard that, I've heard recall, I've heard reorganization for a long time. I do not want the city to do anything illegal. And I don't think we need to put everyone through these discussions every meeting. We've already lost our city attorneys over this. And so I would like to thank everyone who voted for me overwhelmingly at the last election. I hope I have served you up until this time. I wished I could have stayed for my whole term. But at this time, I think the council has decided that they want to reorganize and I'm going to allow them to do that. So at this time, it's all yours.
So legal counsel, do you have something to say?
No, no, I don't. I think you have a, a meeting to run.
So I think what's on the table?
Well, I think we need to continue with this because I just want to set forward the basis for this council to be able to reorganize at any given time for the benefit of the community. And I think that should be stipulated somewhere in here. And, and I think that needs to be added because these actually, we're elected officials by the community. And we're not here elected by council, well, on certain occasions, when there's a vacancy. But I, but I believe we should listen to the community and make the changes necessary, necessary to be more effective in local government. And that was the whole idea, not to make people resign or quit because we should be honored to be a council member representing the community, not only as a mayor or mayor pro team, but just as a council member, representing our community with the same commitment and with the same honesty and transparency. It don't matter if I'm a council member or mayor pro team or a mayor. I should have the same ambition to benefit the community, not myself. That's, that's, and so I believe we really need to look into this and make the changes necessary to have the guidelines to reorganize whenever is necessary. Not waiting for election day or election time or any given time. I would like the rest of the council to see if they see any changes or any additions they need to make to this resolution.
I think from my end, there would be no, no changes.
How about number 10? Because I think it doesn't, I don't see who gives the option for council to reorganize at any given time.
Number five does, it's just that it goes into effect after the election. Number five would allow you, is there remove, we can change that to reorganize? But that would allow the Mayor Pro Tim could be removed or the council reorganized and select a new Mayor Pro Tim? I think, I believe we can, I think we are where we should be from what I'm understanding from council. My concern and is, I can only advise you that we need to follow the government code. And if our legal counsel is advising us that we should be following the government code, then I cannot recommend against that.
No, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to abide by the government code.
Okay, okay.
And this is, this is just, we're drafting a resolution. We're just drafting a resolution. In the meantime, we can verify if we're doing anything that goes, that goes against the government code. Right, we're not, we're just approving a resolution.
We're just...
We're not, we're not, we're not making, taking action at this time. We're drafting a resolution to reorganize council.
Right, but you're talking... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If necessary, that's what we're trying to do.
No, and I understand that, we seem to be stuck on five and 10. Five, I think, I believe that's kind of the, the goal of this, is to be able to have the latitude to be able to, if, if council fills by majority that they would like to remove the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and reorganize, that would give you the authority to do so. Number 10, all it says is basically it wouldn't go into effect until after the elections. And that's where I'm getting, we're looking at three meetings. That it would go into effect and then your policy is in place.
Okay, but I believe that we need to verify this restriction.
Or can, or can we have, you know, the attorney draft the memo with the government code and then bring it back to the next meeting with, you know, probably some input?
Right, and we can make reference to the government code in number 10. If that, if you feel more comfortable about that, that's not a problem. Just as per government code, whatever, would that be possible, Mr. Schulte?
Sure, I, I, I mean, so Melissa, allow me to be a little bit technical here. You know, the county, the attorney works at the discretion of the council. I'm a little bit unsure whether the council actually wants to follow the government code. So adding the government code to this resolution seems to be contrary to what the council wants.
Well, no, no, we don't want to add the government coding to this resolution, no, absolutely not.
That's, that's exactly what I was saying, so. I just need some clarity, that's all.
You know, I think the clarity will come, what I, what I, what I was suggesting was for you to draft the memo with, setting the government code, but not necessarily include it on this resolution. It was just to include it on the memo so we can, we can revise and, you know, just make it an updated decision.
And it will reflect in the minutes as well?
Yeah, you know, not necessarily on, on the, on the resolution, just, just for everybody to see. That, that's, that's all.
So are we, are we okay with the resolution as drafted?
Well, not necessarily.
Is it reorganize, remove, I think the language needs to change a little?
Well, we still need clarification though. On, on verify for a fact that I cannot, that council cannot organize not until November 20, 2020. I know that's the next election date. But I, but I, as I said before, I believe that any city can reorganize if they set up a policy to do it without having to wait to the election call. I mean, the election year. I think if there's a policy made but canceled and it's approved, it should oversee the, the way that the government code gives that exception, that the, that the community or the city do not have to meet that a government code unless they have a policy in place to how to organize, reorganize. That's the way I understood when Mr. Farley mentioned it. Since, since we didn't have a policy in place to reorganize, we were going by what the, what the general government code was saying, how to, how to appoint the mayor and mayor pro team. But if we have a policy in place that will specify, you know, when to reorganize if necessary, as the majority of council desires to do so, being able to do so. And that was the whole idea.
And I believe that is what is within the policy itself. If there's something you'd like to change, again, I can't recommend going against the government code, but I think the resolution itself has the items that you're discussing. I think we're there. We're just kind of hung up on 10 and if our legal counsel can provide the government code and what it states about this going into effect after the next election, unless there's something else within the body, because I'm, I'm hearing possibly, you know, let's bring it back at the next meeting. There seem to be a concern with remove, reorganize, we can, we can amend, that's not a problem at all. But again, I can't recommend something that goes against the government code. But I'll be happy to make sure that this is brought back and it has the language the council would like. We can have... We can have our legal counsel provide some type of memo stating that this is the government code and this is what it says. We don't have to include it on, on number 10. But I, I believe, this is much more complete than our existing policy from 1982. It basically says you appoint the mayor, mayor pro team by majority and they serve for two years, there you go. So I, I believe this would give more clarification. And if at some point council said, you know what? We'd like to add line 11. Because going through this policy, we're thinking maybe we need to add something else. You can do that as a policy. It can be brought back before council. You don't have to go through the public hearings, the publishing, the public hearings and the readings. But again, it would take a majority vote on something like that. But based on the information that I recall and what our attorney has said, I put together this resolution thinking, okay, it's a place to start. It's not perfect, you know, I'm happy to change as long as we stay within the guidelines of the law.
I think, I think we should probably, you know, bring it back to the next council meeting and, you know, with all the reference necessary and.
Are we okay with that?
And, and, see, and just, just to clarify, the way I understood is we do have to abide by the government code and follow these election times and dates if we didn't have a policy in place. So if we do have a policy in place that council can reorganize at any given time before the election time, then that city is an exemption to the government code of waiting or being effective until after the election date. That is the whole misunderstanding that, that we, that's, and that's why we've been trying to set the guidelines to meet that government code, but at the same time being able to reorganize if necessary at any given time.
Well, you can, you, you would be able to after the election date.
If I, if I may, I would, I would pose that our memo will be a different issue. Our memo will be, can a city undo an election? Can a city council undo an election? It, it's not going to pretend that there are words in there such as reorganize or remove. It's not going to pretend there's due process. It's not going to pretend you weren't targeting this against a certain individual. It's going to say, can a city council undo an election? That's the, that's the question. The answer that we have given you is no. And now you want us to provide the legal basis for that. I'm happy to provide it, but I'm telling you, it's not going to change. And it is not the issue. You don't get to just pose the issue differently. The issue is, can a city council undo an election? That's the issue, that's the issue that we'll address.
And, and any comments?
Are we good to bring it back to the next meeting? As it is, the changing, remove and reorganize to make it sound a little smoother? We can do that, that's no problem. Okay, we'll bring it back, not as a draft, but a document for council to consider. Okay, all right, thank you.
So then we'll move over, over to item number seven, which is activity reports and special presentations and committee reports. First one will be Poliworks Building Enforcement Annual Animal Control and Activity Reports, Scott Davis, Poliwork Supervisor.
Right, Scott isn't here tonight. He have a family matter and he apologized. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. If I can't answer them, I will ask Scott and I'm certain he'll provide the answers. It's pretty straightforward. He talks about the development. And the city streets note that the street program may begin, commence a little earlier than we thought, which is good. We signed the agreement with the contract of the day. So hopefully that will get underway and we won't have to worry about the weather so much and, and the material that's used on the roads. We didn't have any water leaks until today. So we, we did pretty well in August. Okay, does anyone have any specific questions about this report?
Does anybody have any questions for?
No.
Poliworks Department?
Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. And may I just say that hopefully they are starting to charge, recharge the 18-inch line by now, hopefully. Thank you.
Is there any warning on the second one, the second leak?
I'm sorry?
That's on the 18?
That's the 18. That's the line that goes out to the prison. But there are valves that water can be diverted into the 18-inch.
And it's sold by I-5 Avonel Carav area?
We've had problems in that area before. We just hope, pray that there aren't any holes in the line that are weak and would actually start leaking again. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next one will be Recreation Department Activity Reports, Sheila Verdugo.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tim and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been a while since you've heard from me. I had some personal things that I had to take care of. But you have before you May through August report. I don't know, you know, as respects to time. Do you want me to go over every single month? Or do you want us just to kind of cut to the maybe August and September report? How would you like that presented to you?
I think possibly on my behalf of the previous month or two.
Okay, great. And how about other council? Would you like me to start with August and September? And you can kind of play catch up with the May through July, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Is that okay? Okay, so we're going to go to August. And so under the contact, contacts, outreach and community. So we have been assisting the health department and KCAO and the Rotary with advertising for their, their events and the things that they are doing within the community. Our virtual kids spots, we had that from June through August and we did that virtually. It was, I will say, an experience, being that I'm not super technology savvy and neither is Anna, but I think we did a really good job bringing that steel to the kids just virtually. So what we done was we reached out to different organizations, groups and individuals within the community to offer steel, the arts and crafts that we would do during the program, the physical activity, health and safety and, what was it? Oh, and food as well. So we were able to pass out meals and activity packets to the kids on Mondays and Wednesdays. And the videos were just uploaded. We would do like craft videos and we worked like, like with the fire department, the APD, the Tobacco Coalition, those types of people. And we had them do videos and we just uploaded those to our Facebook page. And so that was interesting, I would say fun, but there's nothing more fun than face-to-face contact, you know, and more physical kind of activities. Also miscellaneous in August, of course, I just talked about prepping the activity packs for the program. We also helped deliver meals to the senior program as well. We passed out boxed food, the pre-boxed food that came from the Central Valley Food Bank. We also handed out free backpacks that we were able to, we were able to get a sponsor for those backpacks. Every year during our farmer's markets, we have them themed and we actually pass out school supplies during August. And knowing that we weren't going to be able to do that in a physical sense, we went ahead and contacted the Clearway Solar Company and they donated 240 backpacks. And we were able to give out 240 backpacks to the kids. We did, we did the drive-in movies. We did a drive-through ice cream social for the, for the senior program. We, let's look. We did the, of course, just worked with the health department and also completed a list of resources and programs at the UC Cooperative Extension out of Hanford had for seniors. So we've been working with them to start like different types of programs when their actual, their program begins again. So when all of this is lifted, we're working now to start more programs instead of just nutrition and bingo for them. We want to actually have health classes, cooking classes, gardening classes. They have journaling. And we had a meeting with the ladies, a Zoom meeting, of course. And they are very interested in bringing out those types of activities to Avonel. So, so like I said, what we're working on now is a survey for the seniors. And we will survey the seniors and ask them, you know, we'll give them the information that we got from UC, the Cooperative Extension. And we will, we will actually put down everything they have available and then have a, a kind of a blank area where they can fill in, like what they actually want or what they would like to do. We talked about field trips years ago. They used to do these types of things. And I guess financially it's become a burden, you know, and there, there's just no finances there. So I would actually be willing to work with sponsors to get the transportation and they would have a minimal fee. I believe council did designate a few thousand dollars kind of to help the program. I don't know how, I haven't sat down with anybody to really kind of go over what exactly that can be utilized for. But we're really hoping that some of these programs, it will help bring some of these programs to the seniors. And then going into September, we will have our drive-in movie again. It's tomorrow night. We will combine that with 9/11 tribute. So we'll have a short video of the timeline of what happened on 9/11 just so that we just don't forget what occurred there and what that meant for the country. So we will definitely address that. And then we'll go into our movie. The CHP will be out to hand out some information on like distracted driving and some of the safety topics that they, they deal with. They will also be having, we're working with them to do a car seat safety check, which how that's going to work is they're going to do that by appointment only. They're going to do it in Rice Park. And they will give out appointments to parents who would like them to check the safety of their car seats and the way they're installed. And also if there's a need for a car seat or a new car seat or they, they find out that maybe the car seat is expired, they will replace that car seat for, for the community. We were also contacted by several community members wanting to do a parade for essential workers and for Jose Ramirez, which I, I guess he, well, I watched the fight, but I mean, the titles or whatever. So the, that's, the community wants to, wants to acknowledge what Jose is doing and continues to do with his career. And then, like I said, also the essential workers. So it's not technically a parade. It's just kind of like what the high school graduation did. Did, did anybody, was anybody out when they did that? That was really cool. So they just kind of drive around town. We'd have a parade route and would go by all of the clinics and that type of thing. We would meet maybe at the high school and then we would kind of caravan around and just have signs and maybe decorate the cars or whatever, just to let people know, you know, give the thanks to the people that are out there working in the front lines of this COVID. And then also maybe finding a spot for Jose to kind of be at. That's been, that's proven kind of difficult. We haven't been able to get ahold of him, but I'm hopeful. If anybody has a better in to Jose, I would really appreciate that, that in. Also, huh? Yes?
I think that was.
We're still here, Sheila.
Oh, I was like, whoa, my screen went black. Just tell me to stop talking. You do not have to. Do not let me talk to you now. And also we will be working with Patty Studio. She wants to do an October Give Back Project to Avonel. We have to sit and meet with her to really go over the logistics of that. Of course, it has to be COVID-friendly. So I don't know what her ideas are on that, but she is always wanting to come to Avonel and bring dance. And so that creative type of person we need here. So I will sit with her and talk to her about the logistics of what she wants to do and then figure out how we're going to make that work. We have also been in contact with Mr. Hayer at the high school. He's a high school art teacher. So he does our community art night for us. And that is coming in October. So it starts in October and it runs all the way through May. He is willing to do the virtual classes. So again, we're going to be meeting with him to go over the logistics of how that's going to work. So, but just know that we're still going to have our community art nights. Also.
Sheila?
Yes? Hello? Do I have to go back? That was a lot. Now, I don't know where I, where did you guys stop hearing me at? I'm sorry, this whole virtual stuff about my friend.
Can you stay in there?
No, 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 Mr. Presioto. Did you hear about Mr. Hayer, the art teacher? Did you hear that part?
Yes, yeah, from Mr. Hayer.
Hayer, okay. And then we're just talking about building inquiries. We have had many building inquiries. So of course, we're still, all facilities are closed and that's hard because, you know, the community needs a place to still have meetings and those kind of things and we just, we're not able to do that. Miscellaneous is, we also assisted the, assisted the CHP in a helmet giveaway. And we handed out food boxes and of course, the additional backpacks, the leftover backpacks that we did have, we went ahead and finished those up. We are working on a virtual Avonel's Got Talent. We just got to do a lot of virtual everything. So we had some ideas of an Avonel's Got Talent. We also are looking at, working with the health department again for the, to provide the flu shots. Last year, we had a lot of people come and participate in that. And they reached out again. They're going to, going to send us over the information when they get everything kind of coordinated. But we will be coordinating with them to bring the flu shot here. We assisted in delivering the CARES applications to churches and a few of the food vendors that we have, local food vendors that we have. And we will be attending a virtual NAACP Town Hall Meeting, which is Saturday from 5:00 to 7:00. If anybody's interested in being a part of that meeting, if you just email me or come up and let me know, I can send you the information of how to log into that meeting. And then some upcoming things that we're wanting to do are the drive-through trunk or treats. Because we can't obviously do the standard or the typical door-to-doors. So we'll try something a little different. We're, like I said, we're just getting some information and some, some thoughts from the community and then we will go with it from there. We'll also be doing the Afrenda Table that Anna did last year. Thanksgiving dinner, I've already been working with Jeannie Tillitson and Donna Curdie. And they have already a group of people that's willing to pass out the meals. So we again will, we will prep and cook all of the food. And then Donna and Jeannie, it passes over to them and they actually will bag and do like a drive-through, basically like your food distribution, only it'll be actual hot meals. Holiday Magic Parade, we won't be having like organizational floats, but we will maybe just do a pass-through, you know, where we can pass. you know, where we can pass through the, the tree lighting, um, families in their own cars. And then we've even thought about maybe, um, utilizing that parking or that's, it's, it's like a property, um, across from the tree. And maybe if cars wanted to park in there, we could bring out our blow-up screen and have our entertainment and what we're doing kind of put out on that big screen. And then people can hear it through their radios, kind of typically of what we're doing for our drive-in movies. Um, I just feel like there's still a way to do all of it. It's just, like I said, it's just getting down to trying to figure out how to get it all set up. And, and then the technology part will come from, um, hopefully Humberto's listening, but Humberto and Anthony will be the techie kind of people to make all that happen. Um, so that's about it.
That's it.
Do you have any questions?
Can you, can you go back to the building increase? Did that electrical class actually happen with West Hills College?
No, no. Um, we were not able to, um, allow them because our facilities are closed at this point. So, um, none of that's happening right now.
Oh, okay. So they're, they're willing to bring it back sometime in the near future?
Oh, yeah. Well, David's already, I mean, the school gave him the okay to start his classes back up, but the, what, the, but they have no facility to offer them and we, we, our facilities are also closed. So, um, so they're going to have to, I guess, just wait till the COVID or whatever the governor wants to do with all of this, you know? It's out of our hands.
About the, the county CPS, what kind of programs were they willing to bring to Avonel for the building use?
The county CPS or UC Cooperative?
CPS. It says for Yerkes County CPS.
Uh, where are you at, um, Mr. Presiato on August or September?
For August, for the building increase.
Oh, August, there you go. Okay. Sorry, let me go backwards. Uh, building acquire, um, CHP, oh, county CPS for any building use. Um, you know what I will say? I don't know about that one. I, Anna put that one in her, in here. So that one, I think maybe she has it wrong because I've not been contacted by any CPS program. I have not been contacted anyway. So that must've been Anna contact. So I'll find out though and let you know, okay?
Okay, yeah. Because I would like to know if they're interested in bringing those services here in Avonel.
Wouldn't that be nice? Right, yeah. I would love to see that.
Okay. Any other questions for Sheila? Thank you Sheila.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good night.
Now you understand they're more than recreation, they're community activities. Many activities.
All right, members of council. Um, sorry, this, uh, the report looks a little short. It made a lot more sense in my head when I was writing this out, but let me just go ahead and explain this. I'll try to make it quick. Uh, so for the upstairs inventory on August 25th, um, I went ahead and just took, I took inventory of a, a lot of the, you know, just of what we had upstairs, uh, just to see what we could use to, uh, work with for any future events. Um, the big thing, the big thing we found was the, uh, the assistive, the assistive hearing devices that we have up there, which we, which were, um, which we used to use, um, back when the, uh, back when the theater was first operational, um, for the first four years, um, as an official movie theater. Um, hopefully what I can do sometime between now and when, uh, when the COVID restrictions lighten up, I can, um, I can, uh, figure out how to get those working that way. Uh, because during our actual movie, or during our old movie nights, um, we did have some, uh, we did have some grandparents who did have issues hearing the speakers, um, outside of the, uh, outside of the rumble of the subwoofers. So, um, ideally if I can set this up, it would get more, uh, more grandparents out to our films, uh, with their children as well as, um, as well as the, uh, the older folks who would, um, who would, uh, participate for our, um, for our Spanish films. Um, along with this, we were able, I was able to take the chance to, uh, uh, to, um, color match some of the paints between, um, the paints that were upstairs and then, um, around here in the facility, which leads to, um, which leads to what happened the next week, where I just took the time to, uh, touch up some of the paint around here in the facility, namely around corners where people were just banging, uh, they were banging them up with, uh, tables, chairs, not being too careful about that. Um, earlier that week I took care of the, um, I was up to a steam clean and, um, and a wet clean, the, um, the carpets around here because, um, as, uh, with the ash, uh, with the ash going along there, sorry, with the ash blowing up because of the, uh, the wildfires, um, this, uh, the facility isn't, uh, isn't airtight, so a lot of air will blow in and a lot of ash has been coming in as far as the, um, as hot as, as far as the, um, halfway through the concession stand. So maybe a good 10 feet into the building and that stuff is, as you know, it is a little bit corrosive to paint. Um, we, I'm just trying to take care of that as it comes in. But fortunately we haven't had any major damage from that yet and it looks a little brighter now. So that's nice. Um, of course, um, the Rotary Club, uh, food distributions are happening every, um, uh, every, yes, is it every Tuesday, first Tuesday? Every, every second Tuesday of each month. Um, I'm just, um, I'm out there acting as another set of hands out there, um, for help. Um, like Sheila says, we're taking care of the, uh, the drive-in films every, uh, every second Friday of them, or yeah, every second Friday of the month. Um, this Friday we're going to be hosting a, um, a, a small documentary like you mentioned to, uh, just to, um, I just, sorry. Just to remind people of nine eleven, of the incident that occurred, how the timeline happened. And afterward we're going to be showing a, we're going to be doing a screening of Grease. Um, our, our drive-in movies have been getting progressively better and better as time goes on, as we're getting the formula down. So hopefully this is going to be our best one yet. And, uh, like Sheila mentioned, uh, next month we are doing online classes with, uh, Mr. Hayer from the high school. Um, I have a couple of plans sketched out, uh, for him to work with. Um, uh, one of them just being the traditional Zoom classes that we've been seeing, uh, that we've been seeing, uh, teachers around the company, around, or schools around the, uh, around the country implement to, uh, to do instruction. But I also have, um, also have plans to, uh, to emulate the styles of other online content creators. Um, I do believe that we are in an age of where you can really learn anything from just, uh, just from using the sources of the internet. So I want to see if we can capture that style as well, or if it's, it's, I want to capture that style as well, but ultimately it just comes down to what Mr. Hayer wants to do. Um, but this is all we have taken care of for, um, late August, early September. Um, any questions? Thank you.
Uh, we now move to item number eight, public comments, announcements and unscheduled appearances. Angie, would you please read the statement for public comments?
Any person may directly address the city council agency at this time on any items on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public with any matter. City council may comment in, acting on the agenda, three minutes per arm allowed. Okay, mask is calling. Okay. Okay.
May I go at this time?
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, hello, greetings. My name is Patricio Sanchez. I, first of all, I want to, uh, make a positive public comment, if I may, and I will be less than three minutes. First of all, I am a new resident and voter in Avonel City. So I'm new to the city, but I'm also new to the role of superintendent here at R.C. Unified. And really I just wanted to introduce myself as well as say, I'm very interested in strengthening our partnership. I believe in great cities, there are great schools and it's a partnership that we could do together. And I'm interested in going forward in a way that is positive and in a way to serve all of our students, all our families in our community. I will tell you that, uh, Avonel is similar to a small town I grew up, but I'm not from California. I'm from Colorado. El español fue mi primer idioma. Con mucho gusto estoy aquí con ustedes. But I'm really just glad to be here and certainly offer that any way that we could work together for the benefit of our community. I'm here to serve our community and, uh, look forward to our partnership getting stronger and look forward to our students having the education that they deserve. I will be sharing some, uh, updates and, uh, reports with city council tomorrow via email. Kind of the, kind of the state of the district and where we are with spores. And I know that we need to have a better answer when Realtors say Howard Schools in Avonel. I'm committed to giving that better answer and we're on the way of improving those spores and the outcomes for our students. That concludes my comments at this time. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, council, and I wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments?
Uh, yes, hi, good evening. This is, uh, Veronica Geary. I just wanted, uh, to make a quick comment. Uh, I don't really quite understand the amount of time that, uh, the public has to spend listening to the topic of reorganization and, uh, going back and forth with the bickering. I find it kind of unprofessional and I think that there should be another time and place that you guys should be handling it, uh, without making everybody wait, uh, especially when there's more things that are probably more important, like the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic. Um, I also wanted to say really quick that, um, you know, uh, not once have we seen, uh, topics such as the, uh, petition that was, uh, brought before city council back in January of 1,200 community members that were, um, issuing a concern. That's never been on an agenda. Um, the fact that I've invited you guys, I don't, every month I come on and I invite you to our monthly Ivan meeting that will, um, discuss a lot of the topics of the concerns of people in the community that possibly if you guys could work with everybody, maybe we can come up with some kind of solution addressing these health issues that people have of a concern. I, I invited every single person sitting right there at those tables today, with the exception of Lulu, sorry Lulu, but, um, I did invite and not one time, I've never heard city council ever say, hey, can we have staff? Maybe somebody get on the call and listen and find out. Yesterday we had DTSC, the Department of Pest Control Regulations, the Air Board, the California Resource Board. We had so many different agencies, they gave some really great information and not one person, not one representative, besides really myself that lives in Avonel, um, was on the call. So, you know, I really hope that as you guys start reorganizing yourselves, that maybe you'll start looking into what the community really needs and quit wasting time on other types of agendas. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. There any other comments? Yes, this time we asked, is there any other public comments? Okay, seems like we have one more. Go ahead.
Uh, this is a written comment from Juan Conde. Um, my name is Juan Conde. I've lived in Avonel since the late eighties. I was hearing council wants to reorganize. Good idea. Let's give the, uh, let's give the people the right to vote for our mayor that will represent our city. Thank you.
Do we have any more? If not, we will close public comments. And move over to item number nine, which is a public hearing. Melissa, would you take this, uh, please?
This is a date and time noticed for the public hearing to consider of the ordinance relating to price gouging, uh, and unfair advantages and also, um, the requirement of masks. And the reason that we're bringing them back, uh, they were adopted as emergency re- organ, excuse me, emergency ordinances on advice from our legal counsel. In order for everything to be in place and to make sure there are no questions, he has recommended for years that we bring it back and go through the normal process for ordinance. And that is what we are doing, uh, as far as price gouging goes. It was adopted as emergency, uh, excuse me, emergency ordinance two thousand twenty oh two. Uh, it was adopted as special meeting held on March 24th of 2020 due to COVID-19. Nothing, uh, there have been no changes in the body of the ordinance. Again, it was to address any type of price gouging that the city was experiencing at the time. We're just asking the council, consider introducing and waving the first reading again. We're just taking it back through a normal process for an ordinance. There have been no changes in this ordinance.
Hmm. So now we do discussion by city council?
I'm sorry, we opened a public hearing.
Well, the one is before. It's before, right?
Council can discuss.
Yeah. I'm going, yeah, we have discuss, discussion by city council. Does any council member would like to comment on this, uh, issue?
I, I think it should, uh, it's not a question whether it will remain in place or not, right? If it's, uh, what, what is a discussion that we're having?
If you would like to amend it or stop it, I think.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you.
The discussion, he's asking what kind of discussion.
Just if there was anything that you want to discuss or point out, this is a time for council to make comments prior to opening the public hearing.
Okay, personally I have no, um, no changes or, you know, it's just, it's just stay in place given that it's a, an emergency item and we're in a local emergency. I have no, no changes to make.
Okay. Any other comments by council members? No? With no other comments, uh, we'll open a public hearing for public comments. Are there any public comment regarding this ordinance? I see none. So we'll close public, uh, hearing and we'll consider already has presented and introducing with the first reading. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
We have a first, we have a second. The first and the second, Angie, your call please.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilman, Councilwoman Marcarisales. Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Presiado.
Hi. So we will be ordering this number twenty twenty, uh, three.
The ordinance twenty twenty oh six.
Oh, six. Thank you.
And it will be brought back to council at the next regular meeting for consideration of second reading and adoption.
Second reading, thank you. With that, we'll go over to item number nine B. And, uh, Melissa, would you take this item also?
Um, the ordinance was deemed an emergency ordinance. Uh, there was a concern again because of COVID and the concern that, um, people were not wearing masks and just trying to abide by the rules and regs of the state. Uh, the council held a special meeting on July 7th. It was presented at the meeting again as an emergency ordinance and it would make mandatory the wearing of facial coverings at business locations, including the members of the public, our customer, or the customers, store owners and others working in the places of business would be required to wear masks as well. It was adopted as emergency ordinance two thousand twenty oh five. There is one change in this based on a conversation the council has had, uh, and comments made that in, uh, on section five, page five, relating to the amending of penalties as to how penalties can change in the event that there's a need to increase, decrease or whatever. As the ordinance was written and adopted, uh, it would require actually going back, amending the ordinance and, uh, going through the first, second reading and whatever. What we're trying to do is to accomplish that since we're already taking this ordinance back. What we're trying to do is to accomplish that since we're already taking this ordinance back through the process. We made the change, that would be the only change that's made to the ordinance itself that is different from the emergency ordinance that council approved. And it states that amendments, it defines established for such violations shall be governed by California Government Codes, section 25132 and set by resolution consistent therewith. In that, if for some reason again a council felt that the penalty portion other than abiding by or going forward with the penalty code that is within the municipal code, having a resolution would allow you to do certain things. Now understand in an infraction, there's a maximum amount that you can actually add as a penalty, I think it's 100, 200, 300, I believe, I may be wrong, Mr. Schulte. But we couldn't go beyond that. Okay, but again, this section would allow council by resolution to make changes. So that is the only area that has been changed. Again, Mr. Farley has asked that and recommended through the years, an emergency ordinance bring back both the, through the appropriate process so there isn't a question about the validity of that ordinance.
And that is correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, here in our staff report, we're now going to discussion by city council. Any comments?
You know, my, my, rather than I come up would be a, a, you know, to make an amendment to this resolution to increase the fine amount to $250 per occurrence, given that there, I know there's some violations out there. And you know, we are past the educational, the educational stage, you know, by now all businesses should be compliant, which for the most part they have been. They have been doing really good. But I think that the fine $50 is, is very small. I would like to see if council would consider to raise the fine to $250 or a fine of the council's choice.
It would require bringing back a resolution after this is approved. Then it could be, it would be first, second, a first reading, second reading, 30 days and then we could bring back our resolution. But again, we cannot exceed a certain amount for penalty because of infraction. But I will double check with our attorney to see what that amount is. But we can do that, it's gonna, it will take a bit, but we can get there.
Okay, any other comments? No other comments? With that, we're going to open public hearing for public comments. Are there any public comments regarding this ordinance?
Hi, this is Veronica again. I just wanted, I just wanted to mention the fact that I think that this ordinance is very important as far as the safety of the community, I do appreciate your, your attention to this and, and, but I also think that we also should, or you should also consider the other amended types of, of, you know, how would you say it? Like certain businesses that, that say that you can enter the store without a mask for medical reasons. And I believe that something like that is reckless and I think it should stay consistent because it's also unfair to the small businesses that don't have any kind of corporate type of support that could type up some type of policy that says, oh, you know, if you don't have, you know, if you want to wear a mask, you can or you can't, or you know, if you say you just can't breathe through it. I, I think that that type of this ordinance should stay consistent and throughout the community because it is, it's, it's still very, you know, much out there and we are very uncertain. And I really hope that you guys will consider all different aspects and, and make it, like I said, consistent within all businesses. If you say that everyone has to wear masks, then it has to be a mask because I really think that there hasn't been any type of proof that says that somebody is saying that they have a medical situation that they can't wear a mask, you know. So, or look further into that type of thing, anyways, that's all I wanted to share.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other public comments regarding this matter? Nope. With that, we'll consider ordinance has presented and introducing with the first reading. Do you have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
First, we have a second. A first and a second, Angie, your call please.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilwoman Carriçales.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Preciado.
Yes.
It will be brought back before council at the next meeting.
The next meeting. Thank you. With that, uh, we'll move over to, item nine C. And I believe Melissa will take this one too. Joyce Fernando.
It's Fernando.
That's Fernando?
Yes, good evening, members of the city council, I really appreciate your time in hearing this public hearing tonight. The item before you is with regard to the CDBG Community Development Block Grant-CV1 NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability. And back in June, the state released $18.7 million for coronavirus response efforts for local governments. And the money is being distributed to non-entitlement local governments, so governments that are not usually entitled to regular payments from CDBG, which the city of Avonale qualifies as that. And through a formula, there's been $87,639 allocated to the city of Avonale. So this funding comes from the federal government as part of the CARES Act relief funding. And it is, it is funding that can be used for various different activities like business assistance, economic development, subsistence payments for, for residents, public facility improvements, those kinds of things. And so what staff has, has proposed that we apply for in terms of the use of the money is for utility subsistence payments for, for residents because we know that, well, there's several reasons why, why this is being proposed, but I would just like to preface that by saying that council can choose any qualified activity that they would like and this resolution can be changed to accommodate council's wishes for, for the use of the funds. But the reasoning behind the utility substance payments is because, first of all, it's CARES Act funding and we've, we've been using CARES Act funding to assist local businesses, both with the, the city's own business assistance program, which we granted $52,000 earlier this year and also the county's efforts to support our local businesses with up to $20,000 comes from CARES Act funding as well, up to $20,000 per business. And so we'd be double dipping into those funds for, for the same purpose, which is not allowed with CARES Act funding. And so at this time, we thought since a lot of residents are behind on the utility payments, we all know the high PG&E payments, the high water, water and sewer utility payments that, that folks are falling behind on. This money could go a long way in relieving some of that pressure for, for individuals in the community. And so $87,000 is not a lot of money, but it is, it can help a lot of people. I would like to note that up to 17% of the funds could be used towards general administration and I would, I would definitely recommend that we hire a qualified organization to handle the program because currently staff is very stretched thin and something like this. Many of you know that CDBG is a very complicated paperwork-heavy grant program and so we would be seeking assistance on, on managing this program since we already have a couple of other CDBG programs that we're managing. So, but we can use up to $17,000, 17, excuse me, percent of the funding, which I think amounts to about $17,000 or something like that. But we, we are requesting that the council consider and approve this, the submittal of the application to the state because it is due on September 21st, the state actually extended that deadline. And give us the authority and give the city manager the authority to sign any resulting agreements if we are awarded the funds, which we expect that we will. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, are there any question for Fernando? Or comments? So with that, with that said, uh, to, at the balance of the, the council preparation will be 2,500, which will come from the general fund?
That's correct, thank you for pointing that out. And one other thing that I, I forgot to mention, I mentioned in the, in the resolution and the staff report that utilities would be a qualified expense, but the council can decide to limit that to either water and sewer utilities or PG&E, other, or other types of utilities. Expand that, make it broader or make it more specific as, as you would like.
So do we need to decide that tonight?
Yes, that would be, need to be decided tonight.
So you did mention up to three, up to exceed three, correct?
No, I, I, I think you can, you can choose whatever utilities you, you wish. It's just a matter of how far the, the funds will go if you open it to, to too many types of expenses.
And right now, so far we only have to pay the water utility bill, correct? So council can ask to add another?
Type of utility expense, correct?
My expense that the community may need. So, there any comments regarding adding another utility expense?
At the moment I'll stick to water and sewer.
Water and sewer. How about Pablo? Yeah, I think the water fund is having a deficit right now, so I think that will be greatly appreciated try to bring it up to a normal standard. So in, in case that we see a bigger need that later on can be amended to Fernando? Or added?
It would have to be amended before we submit the application on the 21st.
It would be like whatever decides today.
Yeah, okay, well.
We're good.
With that, uh, that out, do we have a motion to accept?
Could we open the public hearing?
Oh man, so, yeah, we, now this time we're gonna go to the next step and open a public hearing, so are there any public comments regarding this issue? Do we, do we have any comments on some or? So seeing none, we will close public comment. And, uh, is their motion to approve resolution number 2020?
39.
39.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve resolution number 2020-39.
Do we have a second? A first and a second, Angie, your call please.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilwoman Carriçales.
Abstain.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Preciado.
Hi.
We have three yes and one abstention.
So we pass three, one abstention.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move over to the next item on the agenda. Which is, item number 10, all business. And I believe Melissa will take this item.
Yes, what we are asking, the council consider extending the local emergency. That was declared on March 24th. We believe the COVID, the spread of COVID continues, so we're asking the council to consider basically extending the emergency for 42 days. It would not be brought back to council until the October 8th meeting.
So 42 days. There any comments or discussion regarding this item?
Nope.
If now there's a motion to extend the local emergency declaration?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to extend the local emergency declaration for total 42 days.
Thank you, is there a second? First and a second, Angie, your call please.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilwoman Carriçales.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Preciado.
Hi, let it truly pass for all. Thank you. With that, we'll go to item number 11, new business. And, uh, Melissa, would you take this item?
At the study session this evening, our CPA, our auditor, Sotomayor, Mr. Ivan Sotomayor, he presented the 2018-19 audit. We had a very good report. I would like to thank Dawn, she has done a very good job and appreciate her efforts. It was a year-long effort, believe me, because of COVID. But at this time, we're asking the council to consider accepting the audit for 1819 as presented.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the audit? Is now do we have a motion to accept the fiscal year 1819 audit financial statements? By motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to formally accept the financial, the fiscal year 10, 1819 audit of financial statements.
Thank you, is there a second? First and a second, Angie, your call please.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilwoman Carriçales.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Preciado.
Hi, let it truly pass for all, thank you. With that, we move over to 11C.
Actually, I believe there's 11B.
11B.
Yeah, but I'm asking, Dawn had a family issue and needed to leave. I would ask that this be tabled until the next meeting.
So.
Up to September 24th.
So do we have a motion to table this item since Dawn had to leave the meeting? So we have a motion by council member Ramirez, do we have a second? Second, Pablo, your call Angie.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilwoman Carriçales.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Preciado.
Hi, so we table this item, 11B until next city council meeting. Thank you, with that, we'll go now to 11C. And, uh, this is regarding the CARES Act funding, so Melissa, would you take this item, please?
Sure, as you know, the CARES Act, CARES Act was signed into law on March 27th in response to COVID pandemic in order to assist, to provide direct economic assistance to workers and also to local governments. The, in July, the allocation was actually issued a certain amount for cities. On July 27th, the city of Avonale received its first payment of $21,141. It is equal to one-sixth of the total amount of 162,846 that's been allocated, the second allocation has been received, that was August 27th. And the same amount, in the same amount, there would be one more and it would be the remainder, which is $108,564 that we will receive. The allocation must be spent prior to December 30th or be returned to the state. Again, these funds are to be used to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. They will be audited. I know that Dawn has been on at least two Zoom meetings and received updates and requirements of what will be expected of the city to report. The proposed spending, I know council at the last meeting, we discussed the purchase of the kiosk to take temperature and give a pass or fail for those coming into city hall. Also at other city facilities, we were looking at purchase of seven. And at the time, I believe it was brought up that possibly some I believe it was brought up that possibly some of the funds could be used to help some of the churches. Once they reopen, that this might help. So there was an amount, if you look at the budget, we staffed it, they would bring back a budget. Or council just to review and consider. As you can see, there is seventy three thousand five nineteen in payroll expenses. That will be for any staff that has worked to address COVID. The small business loans, we have fifty two thousand and the empty bottles for hand sanitizer. There's masks that have been purchased. The temperature scanners, again, twenty seven thousand three thirty one. I asked Dawn to add in an additional ten kiosks. That's only if council would like to consider providing kiosks for other organizations or churches or whatnot. Again, this is just a draft and we have handheld thermometers and hand sanitizer of that which we purchased. Which totals to one sixty two eight forty six. Again, this is just what, we, we wanted to bring a budget back so count could, could see, you know, where the money has been spent. Potentially where it could be spent, it must be spent by the, before December thirtieth. There is some latitude, we could. Purchase scan, more scanners, we could, you know, whatever council would like. There is some funds that that could be designated differently. But since the comments were that could we provide kiosks for the churches, I believe that's what it was. And that's why we added it in. I don't recall remembering or receiving any other comments. That seemed to be the, the one comment that we said we bring a budget back, so.
So these are just projections right now?
Yes, yes. Some of them are like the fifty two thousand, we know that has already been spent.
But yeah, by looking at the, for the mask, they said nine thousand dollars. So that does seem, uh, you know, we spent about, what, five, six thousand so far?
We spent a little over, excuse me, a little over four thousand and we have order in, but they're in back order. We were hoping to have more masks to be able to distribute to the, to the business owners, to the community. But we have not received them, however the expenditures.
So they will be available to be distributed again.
Again, the, the temperature scanners and the kiosks, there are seven for the city and money was set aside. In event the council wanted to provide scanners to other areas within the city.
There any questions or comments regarding expenditures, projected expenditures?
You know, I think at this time, I would like to address all council members. This is, the CARES Act funding is, is funding that we can use for the benefit of the community. To help out people in need, to help out pretty much just anywhere that it needs to go. So, you know, part to making a decision, I think we should all think what the needs of the community are so we can properly allocate, allocate the funds. I would be inclined to use some of this money, you know, to, for, for people to, again, continue to utilize for any delinquent bills. You know, I know there are some people that need to, to catch up on bills, so we, we can make this money available for them. Do our businesses need assistance? What, what do you guys think? What was, what suggestions should they be?
Would the, would that be under the guidelines?
I'm sorry?
Would that be under the, meeting the guidelines for the money to be spent regarding help the community for delinquency bills?
For the impacts of COVID, as far as helping with utility deals, I honestly don't know, but I'll definitely find out. If, you know, we have provided some grants to businesses and it was very well received. But there were some business, I, I feel felt that they didn't have the information in time. And I believe there was one application that was received after the deadline date. You know, that might be an area that council would like to open up again, possibly.
Yeah.
But again, those are your decisions.
Yeah, I, I believe we really need to know the guidelines. Where the money can be spent, that way, that way we can make the right decisions where we need the money to go. Because we can, you know, we cannot decide until we meet those guidelines.
This is just open for discussion and we'll certainly provide whatever you need. That's not a problem. We had to provide a budget. And that was submitted, but it doesn't, it just shows expenditures to show that we would use the funds. And that we have plans to use those funds, but there are certain line items that there, we could certainly look at again.
Yeah.
We just had to have something in by September fourth.
Yes, because besides meeting the guidelines, I think we do, we do specifically meet, try to meet the means of the community. Not necessarily kiosks or something that, you know, they can benefit, that they can benefit more directly. So, so that's, but we want to meet the guidelines.
Okay.
So, so something I certainly would, would look at adjusting on, on it. Of course, I know it's just, you know, some numbers, it's preposition, I would say. But I would look to, you know, completely eliminate the payroll expense for seventy three thousand five hundred and ten. And possibly allocate forty thousand dollars of that for utility bills, you know, the forty thousand plus the eighty three that we're applying for. That's already, already makes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars available for people to catch up on delinquent bills, grants. You know, things like that. So adding forty thousand dollars for utility assistance would probably be good. And then the remaining thirty three thousand five hundred and ten. My suggestion would be to, you know, to put this available as business loans for maybe those, those businesses that doesn't necessarily qualify for, you know, other assistance. But that we, they're struggling, you know? Again, just a recommendation, whatever council feels.
So to, to open up again to the businesses? It's just a little muffled, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we could.
Okay.
Or maybe you reach out to the ones that didn't qualify.
Yeah, like, you know, to put this effectively, because I know some businesses, you know, they receive the paycheck protection program. Some receive the county, the county assistance, the four hundred and something thousand. But there's those that didn't receive anything and, and they could be struggling. So perhaps we can reach out and see, you know, they do, may, maybe make it a criteria, you know, if they, they, did you qualify for this loan? Or, you know, if not, then we can provide assistance, something like that, you know, we can bring it back.
Yeah, I, I believe the main idea is to reach out to the most needy ones. So we can, you know, help in this time of need.
So look at forty thousand to help with utilities, possibly. And then thirty three five hundred or possibly more business loans or to expand that program a bit with certain criteria. I know there were some businesses that did not qualify for the county loans, excuse me, grants. And I know there, there are many needs.
So I think, I think those, the ones we need to try to reach out to. The ones that did not qualify or meet that criteria. Maybe we can modify and make him qualify under this program.
I may interject. This is Fernando Sanz Pion. Yeah, the, the reason a lot of businesses didn't qualify for the county's program. Is that a lot of them weren't actually forced to close. And the county had a requirement that you had to close or partially close at some point during the pandemic. And for example, grocery stores, convenience stores, hardware stores, they, they were considered essential businesses. So a lot of the essential, essential businesses, although they didn't close, they still suffered a, a reduction in, in revenue and sales. So that, that's probably one of the biggest reasons a lot of them didn't qualify for the county's funding. Our, our city program funding that we initially did back in May. Was a lot looser in terms of, of the requirements. But obviously a, a lot smaller pot of funding, so the, the impact was a little bit more limited. So I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that information. Okay, so I believe we got it.
We got that with our council.
So, well. Closing comments, but before we go into closing comments, I would like to bring to your attention. I see two from Hemphor Sentinel, two pages with information regarding, I don't know, what, what is that all about?
That is regarding our, those are the submissions that go to the Hemphor Sentinel for the public hearings. They're published in the Hemphor Sentinel for everybody to review in case they want to comment or have any. Information that they want to bring towards the council. It's something that we have to do.
We have to provide public hearing notices to a newspaper, an adjudicated newspaper of general circulation. We don't have a newspaper in town, the Hemphor Sentinel would be the, the newspaper that we rely on. And those would just show that we in fact submitted those public hearings.
So the information on top of the page is now related to the city, who is his salesperson? Oh, he's the agent from the Hemphor Sentinel. Okay, that was, was kind of confusing. Okay. Because it didn't seem to be a part of the, it's seen in two different places, so I have that. Question. Well, with that being clarified, we move over to item number twelve, which is closing comments. Do we have any closing comment from city clerk Angie?
Just congratulations, congratulations to Ms. Lourdes Carisales. Welcome to the city council.
Any comments by our city manager?
I would also like to congratulate you for this and welcome to city council. And I want to thank the city councils, not only the city council, but all the others that I've worked with.
Let me focus.
It, it's been, it's, it's, thirty six years has gone by very quickly when you look back. But I thank you for this opportunity. It's, to serve in my hometown has been exceptional. And I just thank everyone for their support and I wish Avon a the best, always will.
Thank you.
We do have nine candidates that have, were successful in filing, just wanted to let you know, just wanted to bring you up to date on that. And that was the only other item I had. Thank you.
Nine candidate for the November election?
Yes.
For three positions. Nine candidates for the November election for city council?
We've never had that many that have run. So that's, that's great. People are interested in their city government, that's good.
That's good. Need to applaud that. Any closing comments, Pablo? Thank you. Closing comments, newest council member, Carisales.
Thank you for allowing me to be on the council and I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Closing comments, councilwoman Ramirez.
Yeah, I also want to congratulate Mrs. Carisales, you know, welcome to the Havana City Council. I do want to remind you that, you know, you, as a city council member, if we are committed to the community, we represent the community. So it's, it's, you know, we always have to listen to the needs and, and respond to them. I would also like to ask Melissa, if, I know you only have five working days. And is there something in your schedule to, to give her some general background on, you know, how the council meetings run? I don't know how your schedule looks, that's why.
No, I, I will, I will talk to her and also speak to staff.
Okay, thank you. And also want to apologize for the long waits. I know we had a very long meeting today. They usually not this long, but you know, we will, we will try our best to improve in any, any way we can. I also want to wish the, our current city manager Melissa, you know, a happy retirement. You have been very helpful and very resourceful and I really hope that you have a, a very nice retirement. To the community, you know, continue, please continue to use the, the face mask when you go to a business is very important. And lastly, you know what, something very important that happened today that had not happened, which is our translation. So, you know, we, the city now has the translation during the council meeting. So this is an opportunity for any Spanish speaking community, pretty much just anybody who lives in the community to. You know, the, the meetings are easily accessible through Zoom. We have translation. You know, you can, you can voice your concerns during public comments without any, any restrictions. And that is all.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Under present, I would like to thank council member Ramirez for your help to see that that happened. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. My closing comments will be, I also would like to welcome Lourdes Carisales as a new council member. And I welcome aboard and I'm looking forward to work with every single one of you. Like I mentioned it before, I believe we're here for a reason, to listen to the community and work together. And I, and I really apologize if we were kind of unprofessional. I believe that there's times when we all need to listen to each other, be respectful. And, and also try to move forward without any, you know, with any resentment. Hopefully we'll work together and continue bringing issues from the community. And I also would like to thank Melissa for her twenty six years of service to the CEO of Avon. She will be missing, but I hope she'll be available whenever we need. You know, when you heard, I believe she'll be helping us while we finalize the recruitment of our new city manager. A new city manager will be appointed or elected, I believe, by. September thirtieth.
Announced.
Announced, it'll be announced September thirtieth, so we're looking forward to that moment. We, we really need to focus on real issues within, within our community. I also want to remind the community that the COVID is still out there. You know, we did see the improvement in the businesses, even on the streets. And I'm very glad that the council supported the city providing masks and sanitizer. And that we will continue to do so, have we have the funding and we're looking forward to have the community need. And the one other thing I was going to ask, I believe one of the concerns regarding people being late on their bill payment is the, the cycle. Of when they get paid, have there been other dates, look at like the middle of the month? So what they can make their payments sometime without being on default? Maybe it can be moved tomorrow, the middle of the month where, you know, they can be, that'd be a better idea?
I'm sorry. What we have done, and this has been going on for the thirty six years that it's been at city hall. Is that we've worked the best that we can to help. And we understand that some people get paid on the first, some people, you know, get paid on the fifteenth or whatever. And we just need people to call. There is a certain point that we, we have to collect because this is actually public funds and it, it pays for services. But to just call and speak to Yolanda or Griselda or Diana. And there is a process that we follow and we're, we're here to help. We're not here to be a, a barrier to cause problems. But we have to decide on a date because of our billing system itself, not saying it can't change. But I just want council to know that we do work with our community. And there's still expectations of the city, but we also understand people have, you know, have, have their own issues going on in their lives too. And we try to be as flexible as we can.
And, and, and I mentioned that because I, that's what I want to assure the community that city hall is open and to work with them. And the same like we did today with, with Sandrak's group, you know, there's, we can, we can kind of work with them. And hopefully set up, you know, payment plan, some, somewhere where they, instead of, instead of getting late charges. Fees that will, you know, make the bill harder to pay the next month. Maybe we can help them kind of get, get back until being on time paying their bills. So I just want to assure the community that our city staff is willing and open to work with them. Don't be afraid to come and, and say, voice your concerns and, and hopefully walk, walk it out. So if there's any other comments at this time, so we'll call the meeting to order and manage, thank you. So it's ten, ten o'clock?
Ten oh one.
Ten oh one.
And thank you, Tony and I'm very told.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. You're welcome. Thank you, Melissa, for everything.